Okay, now you're good.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Wednesday, April 6th here in the Second Theory School Media Center, and we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on your back, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The West Central Area School Board has set aside time to allow the public an opportunity to address the board during the public comment segment of this meeting. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to not more than two minutes. The remainder of the meeting is designated for the board to conduct the business before them without interruption. The board asks that all comments be civil, courteous, and respectful. The public comment portion of our meeting is an opportunity for the board to listen to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is not intended to be viewed as a discussion, but rather strictly an opportunity for the public to address the board with information you wish us to take into consideration. Individuals who have questions they'd like to be addressed can direct those questions to questions@isd2342.org. Our mission statement is to challenge and support our students, staff, and families in each person's road as an engaged learner and successful citizen of our community. I'm gonna move into roll call, starting with Christensen.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Nessman is here, Sibalik.
Yes.
Sandstad is not with us tonight. Strunk.
Here.
And Albrecht.
Here.
Okay, we'll move into the public comment portion of our meeting. Rebecca, I believe you wanted to address the board.
Exactly.
That's a great question.
Anywhere up here. I can maybe see if you would like.
I'm gonna read from my screen if that's okay, so I can get it in the timeframe. I'm here tonight to inquire and/or make a request for WCA to reinstate the pairing agreement for hockey with Morris High School. I understand this is on your agenda for the discussion tonight. It is my understanding the agreement was terminated last year. Onyx has played hockey since he was five years old in Alexandria and would greatly appreciate the opportunity to continue playing in the high school. As adults, parents, and educators, we all know participation in high school athletics and extracurricular activities are a key component when it comes to a successful high school experience. It's very likely I'm making this request a little early since Onyx will only be in seventh grade next year. However, I know these types of agreements may not be reviewed often, and we do not want to miss our window. I tried to get a little more information from Jake over the past couple of days, but was unsuccessful. Pairing is a possibility. Ideally, we would have Onyx start to play hockey in Morris next year, giving him time to settle in with new teammates before varsity rolls around. In addition, I think it's worth mentioning that currently WCA has four additional students at South who also play hockey outside of the district, and I do believe there are a couple more students at North Campus who play in Fergus. I strongly believe that if WCA started to promote the collaboration with Morris at the elementary level, we would easily recruit more students, and not just with hockey, but with the other pairings. It might also be worth exploring pairing with Morris for gymnastics. Currently, Main Street Athletics in Hoffman has over 70 WCA students enrolled. These are students who would greatly benefit from the opportunity to participate in gymnastics during their high school career. Lastly, I would like to take the time to thank the school board members who returned my phone call a couple weeks ago when there seemed to be some sort of misunderstanding or communication error regarding the new dad request policy, preventing a school secretary from being able to email me a copy of the school calendar. Specifically, I would like to say thank you to the school board member who was able to text me the calendar, saving anyone's time. I don't want to waste anybody's time. Thank you.
Is there, what was the specific? Can I ask first?
Go ahead.
How many students did you say were in gymnastics?
Seventy-one is the exact number. Yeah, it's huge. She operates every single evening of the week.
And the specific reason to, right now, we're not paired with anybody for hockey, right? So would it make a difference whether Morris, Fergus, or Alec?
I think it would be Morris, Alec, or Fergus. But I don't think Alec would ever pair, and I don't think Fergus probably would either. I think Morris would be the only. And I mean, if you're pairing with them for tennis already, I think that would probably make the most sense.
Do we let it go because of the one time that I graduated? So.
Right, right. And I probably should have came in, I don't know if it's a big deal, terminating it, reinstating it, but I kind of just wasn't aware that it was happening.
It's not unusual for us to address that as we have kids that graduate out and then kids that kind of grow up through the ranks and want to do a parent.
And it might not even need to be reinstated now. I just wasn't sure if it's not every two years or what the terms are. Because I know there's rules that, with that year rule with varsity sports, where they have to be enrolled to start, or they have to sit for a year. I just don't want that to happen. And then I don't know if it applies to JV also. So that was just a detail.
What are the advantages? Does anybody here know what the advantages to? Say you have, hypothetically, you have one or three students, let's just say. What are the advantages or disadvantages to pairing? Is a student can still go play? Can they still go and play there without any advantage? Or what's the advantage to disadvantage?
Well, like, there's club-level hockey, but that's gonna end. Club-level hockey ends basically ninth grade. So then if you want to play after that, pass varsity. And Onyx couldn't go play for Morris if he was enrolled at West Central unless there was an agreement put in place.
Okay, so they're not allowed to participate if you don't have a program.
Unless there's a pairing agreement.
Because we had to pay for student rentals.
Huh?
We ended up paying on a pairing agreement for paying for students, the school.
I know we had an agreement, but if there was an agreement, they can't play unless there is an agreement.
Right, he would not be eligible to play hockey in Morris without the agreement.
Without the pairing, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Christensen, thank you. Was there anyone else that wanted to address the board tonight? Okay, we'll move on to modifications of our agenda. There are a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. We are going to move up the Community Education Report under Presentations and Reports, letter C. And then if you turn over to the backside under General Consent Items, we're going to add number six, seven, and eight to tonight's agenda. Number six is to approve the hiring of Eric Schoenbauer as the Dean of Elementary Director of Community Education, effective July 1st, 2022. Number seven is to approve the hiring of Richard Ivor Masterson as high school science teacher at BA Step Zero beginning in the 22-23 school year. And number eight is to approve the hiring of Zachary Davidson as high school math teacher at Step Three beginning in the 22-23 school year. Any other modifications or revisions to tonight's agenda?
To approve.
Motion to approve. And a second. Move into a roll call vote, starting with Christensen.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Nessman's a yes, Sibalik?
Yes.
Strunk?
Yes.
And Albrecht.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into Presentations and Reports. My own, the floor is yours.
Thank you for letting me go early. I have our basketball banquet tonight, so I'll be leaving about 6:15. You guys have my report. I think the biggest thing is probably happening is tomorrow morning at 6:30, I'm turning on the registration for our childcare. And that is for summer care, that is for next fall after-school care, and next fall wraparound care. So hopefully it goes off well. It's all online. We sent an Insta alert last week saying this was happening. Look for the note. We sent home a note, and then we sent a reminder tonight with the note attached. So hopefully everybody has the same, you know, it's even playing field as far as getting there. We determined influx was so high that just need to be first come, first served. So hopefully that goes off well tomorrow morning, 6:30. We'll see. Preschool registration on kind of that same note is opening Monday, April 25th at 8:00 a.m. A letter will be sent out to families. But if there are families that you guys know that have moved into our district and they haven't connected with the elementary schools, please send them our way. We need to get them on our census list and get their address so that we know who to send letters to. We're happy to do that. We just need to know they're there. We have a date set for our big family masquerade dance. It's May 1st, so it's the day after prom. We're just kind of using their decorations, so we don't have a lot of double up there. So I think that'll be really a cool opportunity for families to come in and dress up and have fun for a Sunday afternoon. We are finally getting AARP classes back up and running. They have kind of let go of all their COVID restrictions. Not all of them, most of them. Chrissy's been handling that, so thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing that. We have two scheduled in Hoffman, and we have one scheduled in Elbow Lake. The ones in Hoffman are just refreshers. The one in Elbow Lake is a full class. And if people need those dates, they can call Chrissy in the district office. You guys can see all the summer opportunities that we're hoping to offer this summer. There's no shortage of things to do, so we're excited for that. Things are really wrapping up as far as getting our brochure ready, so we should be ready to toss that out to the students about May 1st, end of April, very beginning of May. Any questions on any of that? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you ask if there were any questions. So we'll move on to number two, Elementary Facility Evaluation and HVAC Options. We have Jeremiah Christensen here with us tonight. We also have Tony Wolf from Zerberg with us. And so, Mr. Christensen, I will pass things over to you to lead this discussion.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for having us. Sibalik, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, excellent. I am gonna go ahead and share my screen. Feel free to ask questions at any time. I got a brief presentation to walk through that'll just kind of let you know where we've been the past couple of months, and then we'll talk through kind of where did we go or how can we help you guys from there. So just a brief introduction. As I was introduced, Jeremiah Christensen. I am Vice President of EMT Engineering. We're out of Fargo and have worked with Dale in the past on previous projects and do all kinds of K12 schoolwork across Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota. We've got about 100 employees, and we do mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering. And then Tony, do you want to do a quick introduction? I think the board already knows you, I don't know.
Yeah, I think everyone knows me, but Tony Wolf with Zerberg Architects.
Perfect. All right, I will share my screen. Let's see if this works. All right, everybody seeing PowerPoint? Okay, so just, we were gonna do this a few weeks ago, and I asked Dale for permission to delay it. And the reason I wanted to do that was we wanted to grab some data. And so I do have a couple of slides in here that just kind of show some current data points of the two different school locations. So that's kind of what pushes us back a little bit. But we will talk through the title overview, current state where we're at, and then kind of talk about where we're going. So if you look at the schools, a couple items to note. We did a walk, went through all the mechanical and electrical spaces, looked at a lot of the equipment, looked at a lot of the different educational spaces. And I'll say a couple of things. One, it's very aged. But secondly, the buildings are extremely clean and they're well taken care of. The mechanical rooms are well-kept. Things are, obviously, the staff cares about the building. So just a kudos to the staff there that's taking care of things. When we start looking at the systems that are there, most of them are very far beyond their useful life. Typical useful life on the mechanical system is 20 to 25 years. And we still have steam heat in a lot of these locations that is well beyond that. We have pipe leaks that are happening. And probably, you know, one of the big things that we're noticing as we look at the buildings is just their very inefficient electric upgrade. So they provide poor indoor air quality. We're not getting a lot of fresh air in a lot of our spaces, which we'll talk about on the next couple of slides here. We have poor lighting in a lot of the areas. Most of the lighting is older. It's fluorescent light, not LED light, and so it is consuming quite a bit more electricity than what we would do in a typical system today. And I think probably a couple of takeaways I want the board to have tonight, and we can struggle through this in the weeks and months to come as we try to figure out a way to help you guys. But the problem is, is we have, I would say, infrastructure that desperately needs to be upgraded from the very core level of the electrical service in the heating plant all the way out to how we're distributing fresh air and lighting and power to our rooms. And so it gets very challenging to start looking at a partial fix. And the reason I say that is we could invest, you know, depending on what we do for a heating and cooling solution, whether we do geothermal, which you guys are very well suited to do a geothermal project based on your utility rates and the electrical power that's available, et cetera. Whether we do a geothermal system or whether we do a boiler system and distribute with hot water, whatever, we spent a lot of money on that upfront piece. We spent a lot of money on electrical service and gear, a lot of money on pumps and boilers or piping. It doesn't necessarily, when you start saying, hey, we only want to do, you know, say 10,000 square feet in here, or we only want to do this corner of the building, we start looking at our cost per square foot go up, and that's where the partial fix gets very challenging. So we'll talk a little further about that. But again, overall, in summary, things are very well taken care of. They're very aged. And when we look at indoor air quality in the operations of the building, we really need to start thinking, oh, what am we gonna do moving forward? So here's a graph. I just pulled the last seven days. We have more data than that, but what we do is we stick sensors in the building, and those sensors monitor a few different things. And so if you look at the very bottom of the chart here, this is the overall air quality index. So what we're measuring is we're measuring the CO2 levels of space. We're measuring humidity. We're measuring PM10 and PM2.5. What that is is particulate matter. Where I guess it'd be important is we do have buildings that are in locations that are downstream of a prevailing wind from, say, a factory or a production facility, and you end up having to filter your air differently because you end up pulling a bunch of damaging particulate in your building that you can't see, but is bad for your lungs. And then, like I said, temperature and VOCs. So what you're seeing here, this is, the green is where we want to be. Yellow is kind of the warning, and red is where we're well above where we want to be. And so you can kind of see where we trend up into the red really during our occupied times, and then we trend back down over, you know, the weekends down into the green. And what that's really being driven by, I didn't grab a slide for every single one of those. We could kind of geek out in some engineering data, but we're not gonna go that deep tonight. So I did not grab a slide or a screenshot of every single one of those. But what's really driving that, and you'll see this at both schools, here's our CO2 level. So you can see the CO2 level spikes up during the day. It's obviously caused for people breathing and not bringing enough fresh air into the building. 600 to 700 right here is kind of the level where we start to really control our air cleaner systems if we have newer systems in the building to make sure we're bringing enough fresh air in. What happens is when you get above those points, people get sleepy. And so you're just really not in a great learning environment. We've all been there, whether we're sitting in a warm classroom or sitting in a meeting, a conference room, and the room gets warm, we start to kind of get a little sleepy. That's what's going on. It's building up of CO2. The other thing to note at Kensington, temperature controls were a little bit low. So the temperature was a little bit low. And so that, when we go back and we look at the overall air quality chart, some of those spikes during the day was we had lack of temperature controls. That's going back to the age of the system and just not being able to accurately react and maintain space temperatures in the building while the building is occupied. So at a really high level, that's kind of our air quality state at Kensington. If we look at it during our occupied states, we are not operating the building where we want to be. We do not have good indoor air quality. It's not a space that we would say is a good educational space from that standpoint. So here's Elbow Lake School. If you look, again, we have some peaks in the red, again, during occupied times. And then we have one, I wasn't able to track this down today, but I don't know if somebody was painting something in the room where we had the sensor look. But our VOCs, the reason for the really high spike here on Monday, the VOCs in the room spiked. So I don't know if somebody was spray painting or they were doing an art project or what. But it's kind of fun to go back, fun as an engineer to go back and look at some of this stuff. But very similar trends. Again, the overall index, we're spiking up above where we want to be during our occupied time periods. Most of that is driven in Elbow Lake by CO2 levels. Again, you can see CO2 levels were actually higher here where we were monitoring the air than they were at Kensington. But it's very, you know, kids come into the space. We educate that CO2 continues to build up. They leave, they leave, go home at night. We go back down to where we want to be and down in this range, that 400 to 600 parts per million range. And then it just ramps back up, ramps back up. And that's a very cyclical cycle we're seeing over and over and over. So what does that mean? And I'm gonna put this in a really high-level state, and it's a really big dollar amount. And then I think we can unpack a little bit of where do we go from there. So we have, if we look at our overall square footage, we're at about 110,000 square feet between our two different sites. And I look, so we're in a really weird bidding environment right now. And so Tony and I talked a little bit about estimating some costs on where they would come in. If we were to go in and replace the mechanical system entirely, upgrade your lighting system, put in a new electrical system, put in new ceilings, and kind of upgrade your spaces from a, you know, just kind of clean them up, not remodel a bunch of spaces, but just kind of give them a facelift, we're gonna be in that $120 a square foot. So big picture range, that's $13 million. Some big, big number. So a couple of things to comment around that. One, obviously, we don't need to do all 110,000 square feet at one time. Trying to just kind of put it in context. But if we did, that's where we would be. The less square footage we do, the harder it is to predict that cost per square foot because, like we talked about, if we do a geothermal well field or we do a boiler plant, you end up with all those upfront costs at the beginning of the project that you can't necessarily utilize for the entire building. A couple of things to note around from a code standpoint. So here's another thing to think about as we go into this and start looking at some solutions is you look at, let's take, for example, we just take a classroom wing, and we're gonna go and clean up six or eight classrooms. When we do that, we have current energy codes we have to adhere to, and we have current ventilation codes we have to adhere to, and there's current educational standards that we have to adhere to. So Tony and I will work alongside you and the administration to put together a proposal for the state, which the state then has to approve what we're going to do because Department of Education will only allow us to, you know, do projects that, one, recodes, and, two, think that it's a good use of dollars. So we have to go through that process. Secondly, when we start looking at, again, if we're gonna update six or eight classrooms at a time, our approach for doing six or eight classrooms at a time is probably different than doing 110,000 square feet at a time. And we start looking at systems that are, you know, much smaller or kind of can stand alone on themselves and still meet our energy code and meet our ventilation codes, et cetera. The challenge is that we start piecemealing this apart into very small pieces in the building and do very small, you know, standalone pieces of equipment, is if we do decide to embark on a much larger project in, you know, say, three years or five years or seven years down the road, that equipment is not really reusable. So we want to be really smart about how we attack that and how we go into it. Because we don't necessarily want to be spending dollars now to provide a better educational space for the kids. That isn't something that we can utilize long term. So again, just kind of some things we talked about. The smaller square footage we do, the higher the cost per square foot. I think one thing to note, that cost per square foot, if we would have done this, say, two years ago, two and a half years ago, pre-COVID, we probably would have been around that $85 or $90 square foot mark. We've seen a huge cost escalation. People keep asking if it's gonna go down or if they should wait. If I could answer that, I wouldn't be an engineer anymore. I have no idea what the future's gonna hold. But we have not seen things come down. It does seem like it's stabilized a little bit in the past few months, but certainly haven't seen costs come down. Sorry about that. And then, you know, budgeting is really tough right now. So we try to, we have our fingers on that, but it's pretty tough to put a big-picture number at this, especially with no design work done. It's really just the cost per square foot. I think one thing that's important for the board to know here, and I have number three. Tony could get into this further if we want to kind of go down this path. But you start talking about 21st century space needs, and I think the way that Tony and his team of experts would design a school isn't necessarily the way it's currently laid out. There's more common space, there's more connected learning space. We certainly have much better daylight. So the footprint of this building would be much different if we could say, hey, let's start fresh or let's do a major, major remodel project. And so I think that's another challenge. Obviously, we all need our buildings to heat and cool. We want to provide good indoor air quality. We want to provide good lighting. But it's a tough sell to the public from a standpoint of dumping several millions of dollars into a building. And when somebody comes in there in the fall and we're done with our summer construction and it doesn't look any different other than maybe a little bit of paint, that's always kind of a tough thing to couple together. So if we could take the infrastructure[1432.14] So if you, if we can take the infrastructure and couple it with actually making a better building, better running space, that always seems to accomplish things better. I, I think the thing to point out to you that both buildings, the bones are pretty tough in those. When we start looking at the, the way the structure is laid out, we start looking at the dimensions from outside wall to outside wall and start to reconfigure things, they're, they're not easy buildings to work with. And so we can certainly do an indoor air quality project. Again, we could break this down into 10,000 square foot pieces if we want. But we're, we have a challenge of where the buildings currently, how they're built and how they're put together and kind of, how they probably should be with everything we know about education. So with that, that's really all I have. We can go way deeper into a whole bunch of data and information. Trying to get to super high level because I, I kind of want to just, you know, how can we help you guys dig into this further and how can we disseminate the information?
I'm sure there'll be some questions. I have one that I'll start with. You had mentioned a couple of times partial projects, Jeremiah.
Yep.
Is that a direction that you're seeing school districts go? Or is that just, you've had that question asked before and you wanted to address it?
No, I think, so twofold. We always try to go into, you know, we're paid communicators and we're paid to help you guys come up with a solution. And so knowing that, I've never been involved in a project that had more budget than we had scope other than Ralph Engels' site arena up in Grand Forks. They just kept putting more and more money into it. It didn't matter what it cost. That was kind of fun to design. But outside of that project, we, we always have, we always have a budget issue, right? Whether the, whether our budget is $2 million or $15 million or $50 million, the needs are always bigger than the wants. And so my thought of going, hey, can we piece this up into, you know, I, we don't want to make this a 10-year process. So you get to the end of 10 years and you're kind of halfway done and everybody's exhausted from doing a summer construction project for less than years. I don't think that's the right solution. But I do think there's probably a financial solution. If, if the board says, hey, we think we're going to be in these buildings as they sit currently for 10 or 15 years, then I would certainly suggest trying to piece it up into two or three or four pieces that are just a little more manageable financially. And I, and I think if we can split the schools into a couple pieces and, you know, do one, one summer, one the next summer, or one, you know, put it over three years, something like that, it becomes a little more manageable to handle financially. I, so I'll couple that with one other thing I didn't put in my slide. We do have an opportunity to fund a piece of this work through some energy. From a standpoint of, like I said, you, you have all fluorescent lights, we can go to LED, there's, there's a big cost savings there. We, there's also cost savings going from our steam boiler system to a geothermal heat pump system. So there is cost savings to be had. It's certainly not going to fund all the projects. I think just a, a way to look at it is we can maybe fund somewhere between 20 and 35% of our project cost by doing that. So I think it's a funding model to use. It's pretty tough to go and pay for your entire building on a lighting upgrade and a geothermal upgrade from just energy savings. The other challenge around that is because you're not bringing a lot of fresh air into your buildings right now, your operational costs aren't really out of whack, even though your buildings are really inefficient. We're not using a lot of energy because we're not heating and cooling fresh air, which we should be to have good indoor air quality. So that, that, we kind of have competing interests when it comes to the utility costs. That was a really long answer. Hope that helped.
That's okay. I had one other question on my list. I don't remember what the threshold is. Tony, this might be a question for you, what that threshold was from a dollar amount standpoint, where the rule of what percentage of a project you have to allocate to ADA compliance kicks in? But I'm assuming that 13.3 million dollar number is project-related and maybe doesn't take that part of it into consideration? Would that be a correct assumption?
Yeah, I think typically, I think it's between 10 and 20%, something like that. But on an HVAC upgrade, the state explicitly excludes that requirement.
We still, just to note though, Tony, and clarify me if I state this wrong, when we go and we do an HVAC upgrade, we do have to adhere to current codes, which means we might have to add firewalls, we've got to address sprinkler system issues, we have to address fire alarm issues. So that sort of kind of exit, egress, life safety kind of things do need to get upgraded. Is that, did I say that right?
Yeah, I think we're putting in substantial amount of money to, that requires to meet the current codes. Now at this date, the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry.
So without, oh, I'm sorry, without having a sprinkled building now itself, for example, what, what are the new codes? If you rip everything out to address the HVAC system, is, do the new codes include an element of having to have a sprinkled building?
Yeah, it depends on the, the size of the different areas. That's something we'd have to dive into a little deeper, but I think you'd likely be into a sprinkled building at this point.
Yeah, that's typically the cheapest option. And so when I, when I was looking at our square foot cost in, in recent projects that we had in the past few months on a bid, I included sprinkler costs in there.
Other questions from the board?
Oh, I'm just thinking about, talking about breaking this up into three or four projects, like he's saying. So like, in my mind, that means we're talking about board authorizing three or four projects, correct? We're not going out to ask the voters for three or four bonds. Do you get what I'm saying? Like, that, that's part of this piece that I'm trying to put together in my head. If we're going to tackle this, is that what we're saying? If we go down this road that we're doing, is board authorizing these situations or what?
Yeah, but the conversation that we've had over the last couple of years about buildings, if the board decides that, that we're going to stay in those buildings for 10 or 15 years and that HVAC upgrades are an necessity, I think that's a potential.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if we were to go down this road that we're talking about going down, that's what we're talking about doing. This isn't something we'd be going out and asking for money for.
I think if you invest $13 million to upgrade HVAC in both of our elementary buildings, that's the board saying that we believe this project is necessary and needs to be completed. And I don't know if there's other board members that want to weigh in because that's simply just my opinion, but.
I was just making sure that I was the understanding that all of us were on, on the board, that, that if we do this, that's, that this isn't something we're asking for.
I'm not there. I mean, I think in my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because when he's talking about three or four projects, we're obviously not going out and asking for a bond every three years. But you know what I mean?
Well, if, if we went down that, you're speculating, right? We haven't decided.
Correct. That's what I, my question was, is if we were to approach it the way he's talking about in a piecemeal project.
If we do all one, unless it were the two-year deal and like he was saying, we get one project one year and one project the next, that could still be a aspiration bond because any project we're going to do, it's going to take multiple years anyway.
Right. Good. I got a question. I guess Jeremiah, maybe what would be really helpful, I think, for us as a board is could you prioritize each building, put a spreadsheet together and kind of say, okay, in South, we believe the boiler is the biggest issue. That's what we saw the most issue with, right? And the options to replace the boiler are geothermal, it's a million bucks. It's rooftop units are a million five, but you get an energy kickback. Electric is half a million and you go on off peak, you know, show us a couple of options. And then number two would be, you know, number two is air quality. Number three is paint and carpet. Number four is whatever. And do that on each one and kind of outline where potential, you know, where these dollars, you know, if we would look at doing maybe a project, like doing HVAC, I'd like your professional opinion as to what is the highest priority. We can sit with Chad and, and then go through those, those projects rather than this complete, you know, it would give a bit, it would paint a better picture.
Is that, is that work that we would do though if the board agreed that this was a direction that they wanted to explore? Just because it sounds like, I mean, that's, that's a lot of groundwork to lay if it's not something that, that the board's all going to be able to get on the same page with and say, yep, we're, we're interested in this. Not that we're all committed to it as a project, but I think, in my opinion, we would definitely want to have a board discussion that this is, this is a direction the board's interested in going before maybe tasking Jeremiah with doing a bunch of that because that, that would take a considerable amount of time.
I don't know. Would it take a considerable amount of time to give us a couple of options on each of the top priorities?
Yeah, let me, let me answer that. So at a very high level, no. I think the challenge where, that we really get into is we can't just replace a boiler. Because, for example, the majority of the building is still on steam heat. We would not put a steam boiler back in. And so when you start replacing the boiler, now you've got to replace two-thirds or three-quarters of the piping in the building, which means you're doing a bunch of remodeling in the building, which means you've got to replace all the steam heat in the classrooms. So it's like this, it's this compounding issue. It's not, we can't really just take out and say, hey, we're just going to do this piece of the building. Because the first thing we have to do is really upgrade that infrastructure, like I talked about. But then as soon as you upgrade the infrastructure, it kind of rolls down. So I can, at a very high level, kind of put some options around, hey, will we go geothermal, will we go hot water boiler? And then as we attack that, whether we decide to do 20,000 square feet or 50,000 square feet, that's where some of the economies of scale come in. But it's not a, I don't think it's a, we, it's not as easy as creating a shopping list and hey, out of these 15 items, which one of the three do you want to do? Because they're so intertwined.
Right. No, understood.
But yeah, I, we can certainly do an, I, we can put together very high level options. That's really not that big of a deal. And I'm having to prioritize the building more.
Yeah, if you could prioritize the buildings, I think that would be helpful.
Building or project?
I think one, one other thing to note.
Well, in the, within the building, you know, north, we need paint and carpet, south, we need a boiler. You know, what is one, two, three, four, you know?
One other thing for everybody to note and understand, so that the way that MDE looks at things is they do not require spaces to be air-conditioned, but they do require, require spaces to be dehumidified. What that means is you have to pull the humidity out of the space, which essentially results in putting an air conditioning system in. And so any spaces that we have to, that we go into, that we're going to impact, if they do not have air conditioning currently, there will be some sort of air conditioning system added that will provide the dehumidification and make sure we meet our, our, our quality needs. And so even if a space, if you say, hey, we really don't need air conditioning there, we still have to dehumidify it.
Maya Ulrich, I think you had a question here a minute ago while we were discussing things.
Yeah, so when you talk about this, this 13.3 million, how, how do you anticipate to break that up? Because if you've got to put a new boiler system and new infrastructure, you can't just do part of that. You can't, you know, leave the old boiler in place and run part of the classrooms and put the new boiler. How, how does that work? How do you break that up over a few years? If that's a, you know, if you think that's an option, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so let, let's take Noble Lake, for example. Noble Lake's got a, it's kind of broke up into a couple of nice little, I call them almost pods of wings, right? Where we could leave the existing boiler in place that's going to u, utilize or providing heat to the existing system. We could go and put geothermal, and we don't have to tie all the geothermal together. So we can put a couple of different geothermal wellfields in that, you know, that would serve, you know, one wing of the building. And essentially for, you know, one year, two years or three years, you end up operating two systems. One wing that's going to have geothermal in it, one that's going to utilize the boiler system. So that's how we kind of look at it. You're, you're exactly right. If, if we go and replace a boiler and rip the old one out, then it's, you're kind of in for everything. Based on the size of the schools, can we do a summer slam, I call them summer slam projects? Probably not, right? We probably almost have to split these into two years. Based on the size of the project and size of the building, we can probably get away with it at Kensington, but not at Noble Lake. It's just too much square foot to attack in one year. So we have to, we look at phasing and utilizing the existing system that's there to serve the piece of the building we don't impact. And then, you know, whatever new system we choose would, would be set up to expand to serve the second half of the school when we convert it in the following summer. Does that help, Mike?
My, I guess my question on those questions for, but I mean, if we're talking about, I don't understand why we, why, what, what the reasoning would need to be if we go this route, why we would break it up? Because, you know what I'm saying? Or why would we, I mean, other than splitting it into two years if you had to? But I mean, we talked about doing three or four smaller projects. I mean, why would, why wouldn't we, it all be in one plan to do it all together if this is the route we had that going? I don't know.
You're, you're certainly.
I'm, I'm not sure who that question's for, but.
Well, so I'll just, I'll give you our opinion on that. You're certainly going to get better bids when you do that. You're going to, and you're also going to get formality of equipment when you do that. One of the things we risk by bidding things over multiple years is you end up with multiple vendors and multiple contractors. And then your warranties and, and who you're dealing with, et cetera, get to be more complex. So there, there's definitely advantages of doing bigger chunks at a time for uniformity purposes. It's just the challenge of, you know, can you, how much dollars can you allocate at one given time? I think that that's the balancing point.
Like, like, is there any advantage to breaking it up other than like you're talking about dollars? Because I guess I don't see it's going to cost us any less. So I'm just wondering if there's any other advantages I'm not thinking of to breaking it up other than because of time constraints?
No, it's going, it's going to cost you more actually if you break it up.
That's what I wanted to know.
Tony, with the projects that Jeremiah has said that might be considered, that still requires review, review and comment, correct?
Yeah, any project over $2 million that goes onto a public bond for approval, for voting, a referendum, would need to be reviewed by the state of Minnesota MDE. So, you know, I, I think there's been some language back and forth in the past about the ongoing use of Kensington and the recommendations from MDE. So that would certainly be a point of discussion because of the message we're sending here by investing $13.3 million into these buildings is that these buildings are, are going to be viable for your district in the foreseeable future.
And that, that's where my question was, was leading. So, so with that, it was my understanding that Brian had a conversation regarding approval of projects. And what, what I read from that or understood from that explanation was that if work is done that's tied into a future project or additional projects within that building, it would stand to be approved by MDE. So it seems like that works to some level at, at North and Noble Lake. But when we look at Kensington and the, the available space and making that a 21st century school, I don't, I don't understand how that might happen.
Yes. I, I think you're accurate. So, you know, like Jeremiah was saying, we could do well fields to, to, you know, that would be usable for the, the new building and renovation into the future. So things like that really would, people go a long way with the, the Minnesota Department of Education in, in that we're not completely disregarding everything. I mean, there's certainly a, a large chunk of ductwork and piping and those sorts of things that you're, you're going to throw out with a new project. But there are some parts that we could reuse. And, and I think it'd be more apt to prove something like that where you have a well field that you can reuse and potentially maybe some rooftop units or something, or some, may not rooftop units, but air handling units. Yeah, that we could reuse. The, the challenge at, to your point at South and Kensington is if that's not the future site, you know, where do you put a well field there that you can reuse, I guess? And, and how do you reuse the equipment from that building into the future? So that's where I'm, I was saying, I think the message there would be that that building is, if you go ahead with projects like, you're saying the message of that building is usable for you guys to perceive in the future.
When, when you talk about reusable components, Jeremiah, you, you addressed this previously in the conversation we had. In what you, if something's being reused, you have the cost of the unit initially and the cost of installation. If you're going to reuse it, it's the cost of removal and it's the cost of installation again. And you indicated that, that sale of those items isn't feasible either because the warranty is off. So it's not something you can, you can gain any revenue back from. So can you explain how we work through this and, and have a viable reuse of ductwork or, or pumps circulating equipment?
Sure. That's a, that's a, that's a great conversational piece, Dale. So here's, have fun at the, have fun at the basketball.
Thanks.
So here, here's a, a good way to look at it. Like Dale said, if we go and we buy a piece of air handling equipment and we, we stick it up on the roof, we buy, we buy something that's basically a thing of your furnace in your house, but it's a commercial piece of equipment that goes on the roof and provides fresh air, heat and cooling to our classrooms. That piece of equipment, say, is $25,000, just rough order of magnitude. We're going to spend another, probably $25,000 getting it installed and hooked. And we're going to spend probably another $50,000 on that, on that piece of equipment, running ductwork and piping to it. And five years down the road, we decide we're going to tear this wing down. We don't like this anymore. This isn't what our school to be. We're going to build a new wing. But we have this piece of equipment that's five years old. Can we reuse it? Sure, we can reuse it. The challenge with that is all of the ductwork and piping that's in the building was specific to the building that was there. So that $50,000 is kind of thrown away. The $25,000 that you've spent to install the unit is all gone. You know, you're going to pay a contractor probably another five or 10 grand to pull it back off your roof and five or 10 grand to put it back on your roof. And then you now have a used piece of equipment that, like Dale said, we cannot resell. The resale value of five or seven-year-old equipment is essentially zero, other than scrap value. And the challenge with that is now you're going to build a new building and you're going to put a piece of equipment on your new building that's five or seven years old. You start having maintenance issues with it and you don't have any warranty on it. So it's a, there's a major challenge of trying to say, hey, let's, let's put a bunch of equipment in the building that we can move over into a different building in five years or seven years down the road. There is pieces that we can do. And so let, let's talk about, let's, if we go do a boiler plant and, and we put in a, a new boiler plant and we have to put in a new electrical service because we've got to put in new air conditioners, which are a big power consumer. Or we, we put in a geothermal wellfield system and we have to put in a new electrical service again because geothermal pulls a lot of electricity. That electrical service, that boiler room, that wellfield, the pumps, all of the core components of that, that system, we can reuse and build around as long as the building's site does not change. We can, we can build around the existing infrastructure that's there. And so let's, you know, we'll spend probably 20 to 25% of our budget in a lot of that upfront core infrastructure. Whereas, so let's say we have a, you know, again, we spend, pick a number, easy math, $10 million. Two and a half of that is going to go into our core infrastructure between our wellfield, electrical service, et cetera. That two and a half million dollars is reusable five or seven years down the road. It's still, still good stuff. We don't have to rip it out and move it and put it back in. We just build a building around it. But I, I do think, Dale, along the points of your question of if, if, if we're going to commit to spending millions of dollars in equipment and installation to improve our indoor air quality and our lighting and the overall ventilation system, you kind of need to go into that with, hey, we're really committing this money to a, keeping bas, basically the building laid out the way it currently is. Because you, you can't go and just change it all up in five years.
We will be revisiting this as we get to the discussion part of tonight's meeting. Are there any other questions for Tony or for Jeremiah? Okay. Thank you both for being with us tonight and Jeremiah for pulling the information together that you did and helping the board to kind of take the next step in our discussions.
Yeah, and just, we'll look forward to some follow-up.
Do you have to ask one quick question?
Yeah, go for it.
Just a, so looking at that $13.3 million, can you, or either one of you say, what, what do our kids gain from that other than the exact same building that they have currently? I mean, air quality?
Yeah, air quality and even just the, the, the quality of, you know, being able to condition a little more closely to each individual roommate essentially. You know, a little better control on temperatures and air quality. I think the big, two big things to keep game by doing a project like this.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you're going to get better lighting, you're going to get better acoustics. So you are, it is going to be a better teaching space and it's going to be a better, a better te, uh, learning space. So if you, if you start looking at national stats, whether it's put out by Harvard or Princeton or some of the other that put out big studies around education, it's certainly a better learning environment. So it's healthier for, it's healthier for the kids and it's a better learning environment. You're still constricted, like we talked about with the physical constraints of the space. Probably one other benefit that, that you could put into play is you do end up with a more usable building. Most of your spaces currently are not conditioned. So you start thinking about gym usage and locker room usage and some of the other space usages. You're going to have a more comfortable building that, you know, it's going to get better use during the summertime. But overall, it's a, it's a big nut to crack without embarking down a remodeling project.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for having us tonight. We're happy to help and we'll look forward to, Dale and others, if you want to reach out and give us some direction here moving forward and how we can continue to pull information together. Look forward to being an assistant to you.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a great night.
Okay, we'll move into the administrative reports part of our meeting for tonight. Mr. Mack, do you want to give us an update?
Sorry, wasn't paying attention. All right, I will try my best not to just read my report because actually since, report this, this month, which I'm going to do a better job of. Couple of things that I wanted to highlight, I looked into some event streaming, whether it be sports or for things in our auditorium. We are looking at different options. There's not currently a great option without going to like a full professional broadcast system in our auditorium. So I don't have a great solution to that yet. With people back in our buildings, it's not as huge of a deal. I did look into sports streaming, looked at about 10 different vendors. There were a couple that are very similar to NFHS Network as far as the way they funk. There were a couple that are very similar to NFHS Network as far as the way they funk work and function. They were a lot smaller and new. They didn't have the robust network that NFHS Network is. Ultimately, I don't think there was a lot of advantages to changing to a different system other than NFHS to any of the ones that were comparable to that. The other ones, they required someone that were a, a staff member onsite to do those and that's not under the umbrella of technology. So I'm not gonna speak on that part of it. I did talk to our account manager from NFHS Network. We do have the ability to purchase what they call a home license. We can broadcast all of our home events on the football field and in the gym without requiring a subscription on the, the user's end. So it's no cost to our public. It does cost us $4,000 every year. And that runs the school year. So essentially August through the end of the school year.
So is the subscription fee that they'd have to buy still the same to watch away games on, or would it be?
Yeah, so they would still, in order to be watching a way game.
It'd still be the same fee?
Right. If they were, if they were watching an away game that had NFHS Network, they would still have to have a subscription because it is the, the, we would be purchasing for our sponsored events. That's it.
Well, the question would be, how many people in our conference use NFHS?
I have no idea. And we've just recently changed conference. It was very popular in our last conference. I don't know about this conference. And, and so that would be a Jake question. There's also a lot of districts that are just not doing any streaming anymore as COVID restrictions loosen. So that's event streaming. E-Rate 22. We apply for E-Rate every year. Just a quick reminder, E-Rate is going to cover both our internet and our connections to North and South is what's considered category one. Category two is all of our, our network infrastructure firewall. So this year, category one was awarded to Runestone Telecom Association for at least fiber connecting elementarys and our internet connection. It's been Runestone for a very long time.
Forever.
Yep, forever, since we got internet. Category two was split. We are increasing, or we're, we're up for a firewall. UTM, UTM stands for Unified Threat Management. So it's this one device that just essentially creates a smart firewall for traffic going out and traffic coming in. So we're gonna be renewing that. That's through CIPA filter. CIPA filter was purchased by a company called LineWise. LineWise purchased CIPA filter and purchased, I can't remember what their name is, but purchased another company very similar to it. So now it's one company that owns their two biggest competitors. They are pretty much the only firewall company in the world that focuses on K-12 education. So that I thought was positive for us. Almost every other firewall company focuses on businesses and also does K-12 education. This one is solely K-12 education, which I think is an advantage moving out. The other items for some of our network equipment is, was awarded to CDWG. One of the big things I wanna highlight in that is we are getting battery backups for our North and South buildings specifically that when they lose power, it will keep our internet and phones up and running for a minimum of 60 minutes. So right now we have systems that'll keep them up for about 20 minutes when we lose power. And remember, our phones run off, or our, our, our PA system in those buildings as well. So when we lose our phones, we lose a lot of communication to those buildings. So after we get this put in place, we'll have at least 60 minutes of both internet and telephone use in those buildings, which I think is a huge safety improvement. This building's a little better. I just have to keep it up long enough because all, the majority of our network equipment is connected to the generator. So once the generator kicks on, it does take over the roomwork, the majority of our equipment is. Device rotation, fifth and ninth graders, as each year get new Chromebooks. Those Chromebooks stay with the kids for four years and they refresh after four years. And that's what our ADP, our excellent damage protection, they're, when the devices are damaged, we're able to send them back in and get them repaired at no cost to us and more importantly, no cost to the students or families. So there is ECF, so it's Emergency Connectivity Fund. We are now coming up on wave three. With those, they are designed for devices to give equal access for distance learning and homework completion in those pieces. So we're going to be applying to refresh some of our second and third grade Chromebooks that are on year five right now. And then the nice part is, is it will give those kids the same opportunities as they would have with the newer Chromebooks. As the Chromebooks get older, they're still great machines, but especially with the younger kids, I don't want them to be troubleshooting, having issues when we have any distance learning days. School board members, I did purchase the Windows 11 laptops so that we can have access to Office Suite. Your Chromebooks are now at five years old as well, I believe, maybe four years old. But I might actually be repurposing those Chromebooks and you'll be getting laptops that have the Office Suite for mainly document accessibility. So a lot of the documents that you're using are Office and PDF and those pieces. And that's just more functional on a laptop than it is on a Chromebook. Second page. Network updates, the, the, one of the biggest things I'm doing this spring and going into the summer is I'm doing a really deep dive into our network security and data protection. Diane and I sat through a presentation sponsored by insurance companies on data security, data protection, the cost if something goes wrong and happens. So I kind of made me realize that we need to take, that there's a lot of pieces, especially myself, that I pushed onto the back burner as technology has grown so fast. And the advantages of having gave to be that first level of defense and, you know, fixing devices in those pieces given me an opportunity, especially this spring, to catch up and start going into more of those security pieces. So we're gonna be looking at some, making some changes and trying to make some improvements over the summer, especially with our data backup and recovery. We are, we have in-house data backup and recovery solution. We are now gonna be working with a cloud base as well. And that's twofold. It's one, data recovery. So if something gets encrypted, all those pieces, we can very easily restore information instead of having to pay for hours to recreate, which is a cost savings in the long run. The other piece of it is there's becoming a lot of legal jargon around data, data policies and how long we're retaining data. And, and especially, I'm getting emails almost every day from different tech groups throughout the state that are trying to keep up with different rules from, whether it's these public data requests because we are far from alone and being overwhelmed with public data requests and some of the, the things that people are looking for. But this will help us clearly define what our data retention policies are. So we can have, have a little bit more clear, here's where our data boundaries are. And once the state helps us clarify what those boundaries are exactly, there, there's still a lot of gray area of what we're required to retain as far as like the, the electronic data. This will help us make sure that we're instantly able to meet those standards. Crisis Go. So we have been looking at Crisis Go for about three-ish years. It got put on hold during a lot of our COVID stuff. When we came back together in our emergency planning group, we realized that we just, we had these great plans, but we didn't have a way to implement plans. Crisis Go is, is an application that helps us with multiple pieces of this. One, it helps us with the immediate emergency of if we evacuate, how do we, how do we know where students are and if they're okay? It helps us with that piece. The other piece that it helps us with is reunification of very clearly identifying where students are, who they're released to, when they're released to, all of those pieces. So there's checks and balances. The other piece that I really like, the more that I'm looking into this, is it, it has a couple of components that are preventative as well. So there, there, the front end of it of, you know, that there's some like anonymous reporting pieces to it. There's, there's those sides of it that will also help us to avoid, you know, the, hopefully avoid any need for a crisis. But it, it gives us a really nice organized holding space for some of that crisis planning. Our website, just quick statistics there. I'm not gonna read through that. It's a slight improvement over last month, not much. It's getting used more and more, but honestly, our Facebook account captures way more attention than our website does. So the traffic to our Facebook account dwarfs the, the traffic to our website. Oh, and as I was, I just have to highlight the fact that, one, Stacy DeSmidt is an absolute superstar. She's incredible and amazing and she's pretty much superwoman when it comes to the technology world and we would be absolutely lost without her. Gabe Olson has been a fantastic addition to our department. He's extremely talented in a lot of places that I lack, which is awesome, especially in graphic arts and video and some of those pieces he's really strong in. And he, he's growing professionally each and every day and that, that's a fantastic thing to see, especially being a WCA grad, that you can see somebody who's growing professionally, who has a very bright future in front of them. So if you see either of them, please go out of your way if you can to say thank you for all that they do for WCA, for our students, for our staff, for our community. It's just about endless.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna, Dan, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
And this NFHS on the $4,000 for the home games, who gets to sign up for that to watch it for free then?
Anyone. You don't need, you don't get a subscription.
All of our games would be free.
All of our games would be free to the public. So they'd still have to go to NFHS, but it would not require any signing.
Okay. How many current subscribers do we have?
I.
Would they use us as their own?
I don't know the answer to that.
And we get money, if somebody has a, gets a full subscription, we get money back, right?
Correct. So if they have a monthly subscription, I don't know the exact facts, but it's roughly about a dollar for each monthly subscription. Each month we get about a dollar and it's paid back every once a year, three times a year, something like that. But we don't get a significant amount. And then for everybody who's an annual subscriber, we get like, it's like $10 to $15 for. So that is, that, that is the, in there, that's their profit sharing that makes up for our lost revenue of people who might've come to our games, but instead are choosing to stream it. I, I, I don't know the exact numbers, but I, I don't know that it would really equate to a significant amount. But you also have to keep that in consideration. We're currently going from a slight, you know, cash flow coming in from NFHS to it would be going, the reverse of that, we'd be paying out $4,000 plus we wouldn't be getting that, that small profit sharing.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Can you provide us with that next meeting or whenever, send me an email or something, how much we do give from back?
Jake was not able to be with us tonight, but he did. Yes, I was just going to ask if he'd like to.
Jake, Jake put a lot of time into his report and I think it deserves a, a local discussion or at least an explanation. So when I asked him about to put some things together, we wanted to start with participation. So if you look at the 12th grade, we've got 14 students, males and females are participating in sports in the spring. So that's 34% of our seniors are participating in a Minnesota High School League sport activity. Juniors, that percentage is 46.6. Sophomores, we've got 53.8%. Ninth grade is 70.3%. Our, our freshmen are involved in a spring sport. Our eighth graders, 76%, three fourths of our kids are participating in the spring sport. And for our seventh grade, it's 57.9. That sounds really great and it is. I mean, that's great participation. The future looks good. Retaining those athletes in the sport is the next question. How do we keep them all engaged and involved? So one thing that, that Jake has brought to the table is practice locations. And, and that's on the, on the next page, but he's, he's struggling right now with trying to get umpires and doing the best to try to find practice locations for our athletes. So when we're in Minnesota, we have spring sports and you have baseball and softball and, and the fields aren't always ready right away. Things looked pretty promising two weeks ago. You know, everything was dry, like the outfield and even down below on the baseball field, the, the, most of the snow was gone. Things have changed since then. So if you look at the next, the second page and you look at the, the week, April 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, these are where we're sending athletes to practice. They go to Alexandria. Am I the only one that's hearing that?
This key bag.
Maya, would you mind muting?
There you go. Is it Maya?
Yeah, he's only going against the way.
So on that second page, like April 4th, for example, our, our varsity JV softball players want Alexandria to participate. And they leave at 2:35 to get there. Our varsity JV baseball practice is in Barrett, so they might be in a gymnasium. Junior high softball goes to Elbow. Junior high baseball is in, in Barrett. And when I look at my window, I've seen athletes, softball players taking fielding practice on the parking lot, you know, because it's a dry spot. So, you know, we, we are really struggling for that space. You know, a, a space that we use. Jake and I talked about how do we, how do we manage that? And he said, well, another softball baseball complex would, would help. And he also talked about another indoor space such as our gymnasium, in which you can put kids inside until our equipment, whether it's better, we can be outside. So it's, it's a hardship for us. On the flip side of that, other districts are in a similar situation. If they're a little bit smaller, they don't need as many fields. But we're at a point right now in which we're busing kids to a lot of places to get practice time. So when we're busing them out practicing, it cuts down on the time that they spend getting prepared for the spring sports. Baton Cage and the gymnasium will, will be great, but then that takes up a good portion of the area. And now we, we have other spring sports, our golf, our track. It's not conducive to be outside yet. So feeling about some things, we don't have space for them to use. So we're really competing. But I, I don't, I don't wish to change the trend of participation. I, I wanna keep that up there. But we need to be able to provide good opportunities and, and appropriate opportunities for our athletes to, to stay engaged. He's mentioned upcoming events, item number five. And then discussion items, when we had talked about sport fees, we talked about admission fees and, and I sent an updated document to you today. It only goes from 1920. But these fees have not changed in, in years. And we have waived food service fees because it's been free and it looks like it's gonna be there again. But I'd like to have a discussion tonight when we get to that point on the agenda to contemplate increasing those fees. The first reaction that people might have is that, well, what about the people that can't afford it? Well, if they are eligible for free reduced meals, they can make the request and their fees are waived. This may have an additional benefit for us because since we've been serving free meals for our students, it means that for them, people are no longer applying for free reduced meals because why take the 10 minutes to fill out the form when it's free right now? So to get a free sport participation, it may cause them to free out, fill out the free reduced meal application and that provides us more dollars through compensatory education. So it would have a, you know, even though they don't pay the sport fee, we make up for more than that lost revenue with other income that we get, especially if our families go back to paying for meals again. Because when we have children on free meals and when we have children on reduced meals, our district makes more money out of them than we make out of paying them. So it's an advantage all the way around. Admission fees, the one point that Jake made is, is that within our section competition, adult, adult fees are, are $8, students are $5. And we've been below that and it's been a number of years since WCA's even addressed those. Then number eight, consideration of expanding Minnesota High School League offerings. He's mentioned who, he mentions who we participate with right now. We've got wrestling and football. We've got tennis and historic. We've got wrestling and football, we've got tennis and history, and we didn't have um, have hockey. The reason that we would drop the hockey program is if we don't have any participants and we have an agreement that exists, then that's recorded as a cooperative agreement with the Minnesota High School. And we're not a participant, so we need to withdraw from that. So that's the primary reason that we, we pull out. It's not just because we didn't have any kids. It's like, we should not be participating in cooperative activity when we don't provide any students to more of a cooperation. So um, that was the, the general logic behind that. So when we look at, at, at things that go on, we also have the Alpine skiing, our kids are able to participate in that. But with the other ones, we have um, um, opportunities that are, are shared opportunities. Other Minnesota High School League are, are fishing league and trap team. And um, the district doesn't pay for any participation in those sports. It's raised by club organizations or other donations. And then um, adding activities, um, you know, whether it's hockey, gymnastics or any other sport, that becomes a board decision. That's not an administrative recommendation, that's not a um, uh, activities director decision. You, you make that decision based upon the information that's provided through us to you. And then finally, number nine, policy number two. Um, we had a discussion at our buildings and grounds meeting and I have some more information for presentation at that time, but, but Jake went through and, and talked about some things that kind of mirrored some of the concerns that we had um, expressed and some of the roadblocks that we had by um, um, addressing portions of policy number two. So um, Jake put a lot of thought together on that, so thank you for um, entertaining me and let me go through his report.
Very good. So we'll revisit some of those items under um, discussion for during tonight's meeting. Do you want to give a buildings and grounds update?
Um, I sent out my report uh, today. Uh, the GNR controls was at North, putting uh, two more sensors on those boilers. Uh, after working through things and going through stuff, yes, we could control them, but with the computer program, we did not actually have a real footprint whether they were being controlled on or off. The program said it, but when you were standing in the boiler room, they weren't on or they were. So they were up there just adding those couple of pieces today. Um, so banning the next two, three days should have the programs updated and stuff, we should be good to go there. Uh, basketball hoops in the gymnasium, um, like I said, the one's got stripped gears, the other one, I think is a braking issue. But I could not test anything and find out anything that I got info from Vinco on, on how to adjust those. So they were up there and yesterday replacing some lights and fixtures that we had. And we're gonna take a look at them and I haven't heard back from Zach yet to find out exactly what those were. Um, but I, I'm sure that one that's stripped gears um, is probably gonna have to be replaced. Um, the other one, I'm not sure they were able to adjust the brake because it goes all the way up, but then after about three minutes, it's halfway back down and that's where it sits. So most of the time it's not an issue except for volatile. Uh, Merlin uh, is the guy with the asbestos in the abatement. Uh, he was in yesterday and looked at the two rooms at North and was getting estimates together. He also was down itself and getting square footage and stuff for his estimates for those two hallways itself. Um, as soon as he has those numbers together for me and when they are available to get in and take care of that, um, he will let me know. I have Mr. Hovis and Joanne from Window Treatments and Carpet uh, already are informed and are, have us penciled in. So as soon as I know when that abatement will be done, um, they'll, they'll be ready to rock and roll and get in there and get things taken care of on that aspect. Uh, just a tidbit, I don't know how much different it is, but uh, I looked back and the abatement for those two classrooms, if you want to know, was 9,800 last year. Just for a point of interest. Um, Joanne was gonna look at the music room too, um, down itself, give us an estimate, see what she could do with carpet down there. Um, I told her that one, we, you know, as soon as we can figure it out, I let everybody know. And I get the approval, she could do that one anytime during the summer, that doesn't have to wait for anything. That is all concrete underneath there, so there's no abatement needed in that area. Um, talked about the parking lot at the buildings and grounds, uh, had a guy here, uh, yes, uh, today um, to look at things for both filling our cracks and also he proposed a resealing of that. That would be a five to seven year reseal on top of what we have and the cracks. Um, and then also looked at the back, uh, after that greenhouse goes in. From what I'm understanding, we're probably gonna have a lot of traffic and publicity. So that is a bad area back there. So they were also gonna get us proposals to tear that out that is there and redo that probably at the end of the summer if possible. Um, after the construction is all done with the greenhouse and things like that. Right now, he'll get us a bid, but they are only getting 10 days on there because of oil prices and everything like that. So he can't extend anymore, but he'll at least try and give us a number. So we have a large ballpark figure for back there. Um, other thing, uh, I called a guy just out of giggles that came across the computer. He is the same company that has been working with Jake about doing the uh, wrestling lifts for the gymnasium for the mats. Our curtains that we have for the stage, I looked at the little tag a couple of weeks ago, they are original curtains that have been in here since the building's up. The fire retardant life is 15 years. So I'm pretty sure the next time we have a fire inspector come through, it's going to be a new guy. And from what I'm hearing from Lance uh, and a couple of other uh, buildings and grounds directors is that had their inspections this year, um, they're looking at a lot of different things. And that's one of the things is they're looking at more of the drapery um, and that kind of stuff around. So he was here today, um, probably by the end of next week. He said he'll kind of have me an estimate of, of what it would be for um, the stage curtains, but that was just kind of a side thing that popped up. Um, last, our pump house, I guess I found out from Mr. Wentz uh, from Barrett that we own this pump house down here off of the football field. Anybody know about that? Well, it's where all our irrigation comes through for the fields and everything. Um, it is not in good shape and there are a couple of valves in there that before we start things up, I'll get together with Jason, there's some back, backflow valves that need to be tested and checked. Um, but I'm not just bringing that up, we're gonna have to do something with that. Um, I guess he had difficulty keeping things thawed this winter in, in that pump house for us. Um, and being leading on it, I guess, I'll dig a little further and find out for sure, but from his side of the aspects, um, from what the Barrett City Council says, we're the ones that own it. So what's in there of there? I think it's lifts for, for.
Booster pumps?
Yeah, the booster pump that's in there and then our irrigation pumps are in there.
The booster pump is coming out, is that right? The booster pump was installed back on the water tower and Barrett was down the hill.
Uh, I'm not fully sure, I think he, this just kind of came up, so I was just putting that out there. So I'll dig into.
I think at the end of the day, I don't think they'll have anything in there. It'll just be our irrigation stuff, yeah. And black valve preventers are, that's important.
Yeah.
They're gonna make sure that those are tested and.
Right. So, um, other than that, yeah, um, my staff's been doing well. We've got those two new guys hired. Um, like I said, got my fingers crossed because that end of the building for some reason must have a curse on it or it's a triangle or something that athletic and is tough to keep people in. Um, but they're doing real well and I think next week what I'm gonna do is probably send one, one day a week up to North just to get familiarized in case we need something up there at night. And then I'm gonna send the one guy that lives that direction down to South one day, just a week here for the next month or so, just to get acclimated in case we need the coverage. So.
That south music room, is that one of the rooms down itself that had leaking roof issues?
Mm-hmm.
So have those all?
We're working on that too. But that's, I mean, yeah, before the carpet goes in and stuff, yes, we'll have to have that fixed. That's part of the, the clincher there. Same with the roofs that are leaking at North and um, the one that's leaking here. And where you can trace it from, now's the time that they can come in and see it. Um, the funny thing is, the one at North, uh, it is a waterfall in the spring, but all summer long, it can pour rain and there can be four inches of rain on top of that roof and nothing comes in. So it's gotta be a, a freeze up and, and that pressure somewhere, back push somewhere, that happens. And where that takes place, because it's along that gym wall, could be, could be anywhere.
And with the south hallway, can you remind me where did we land as far as material? So once that hallway tile is abated, what's going in there?
Um, the uh, just like outside the door here, we're gonna do that epoxy floor. Um, just carpet was, carpet would be a little bit cheaper, but it wouldn't because probably within a year of elementary kids coming in with wet clothes, running around, you're gonna have carpet that's wet, it's gonna stink. And, and or um, besides the wet carpet, it will start to lift tiles more. So then you will have the, the, everything taking place with that new carpet. So with the, the epoxy flooring, um, it'll come in, you'll put it down and there's nothing to it but to run over it with our scrubbers that we have to clean it, mop the edges and, and it'll look a lot nicer. And it's uh, Ms. Prost decided it'll go with the gray, so it's not so.
The red's a little loud.
Little loud for the elementaries, which I totally understand.
We're excited, we don't need them.
So if it's, you know, like the teacher's lounge, if you go in the teacher's lounge, it'll be kind of that grayish blue color, but it'll have a better speckle pattern, more like this out here. And it'll have a better coating on top that'll stand up and it won't be slippery. So that's what.
Any other questions for Chad?
Was that glycol added just to, was that, is that leaked out or was that just to get you out too? Is that a leak?
Um, which, which place?
No, I think it was another, or no, secondary.
That's, that's here.
Oh yeah, okay.
Um, I, I don't know 100%, but I'm thinking that it probably was never filled originally from when they did the heat pump system to begin with three years ago. Um, there is a reserve tank with a sight glass in it and you, you could never see anything in it and now I can, there's a, there's a significant line. Um, I think it's next week, they were gonna come back and test the system again because like I said, it was only at 17%.
Yeah.
Um, and when they left here, they were right around 23, I think he said, but he wanted to take it back and, and test more. Um, so they were gonna come back in a couple of weeks, look at it, make sure our levels haven't dropped. Um, and it's, I'm checking it daily and, and we're, we're staying where we should be now. I can see it, we have reserve and reserve tank. Um, if we're still low, they're just gonna tap into the well field and basically suck some from the well field and dump in on this end to try and get our levels up where they're supposed to be.
So you might have to turn Maya up for a second because usually he's got a pretty short memory when it comes to, if I remember right, when we did the LTFM project for this building, they forgot to include the glycol costs in the original project estimate. We had to revisit it as a board and that was supposed to be resolved. So just wanting to make sure that we didn't pay twice for glycol and it was, it was never addressed before, but we approved it. Does that sound any familiar to everybody?
Yeah.
One, one thing they didn't talk about right away was what they were gonna do with that while the project was happening and then they had to bring in a big tank to pull some out while they did the, the upgrades. So that was part of what they talked about was where do we put all this stuff that we're gonna take out without losing it? So that was a, there was a big tank that was brought in, but undoubtedly with the damage in the gym, you know, the, the one by the gym that busted and, and in the process of pulling that out, some loss in the system. So if they didn't fill it back up, um, yeah, be something to look into.
Here, they came down from Barrett Farm Supply and got a bunch of pulling tanks from you guys, didn't they? Because they ran, I, I bet there was 25 or almost 300 gallons.
Yeah, 275.
Yeah, tanks out in the back that they were just pumping the glycol, the glycol is repurposed, it was put back in.
I mean, yeah, really, they took out, they put back in. So, you know, I mean, 350, you, you look at it is, it's a significant amount, but you also look at, they took what, 75 units out of here? So if there's a, you know, a little bit in each one of those units, yes, we dropped estimates.
It was like 60, 60,000 gallons in the system, so 350 gallons isn't that much.
But it's, it's a, it's enough to.
Yeah.
You know, it's right at that borderline that like you said, you know, it's, you know, you can keep things running, but if you get much lower and you start getting air going through there. Um, oh, and on that note, the third unit, that was the other thing, the third unit that's up above for the gymnasium that has been fighting, we've been having issues with, it's got a leak in it, we found the leak. Now the problem is, is to fix the leak because it's in the middle of the coil. And all of the access panels on these units that are in our, uh, mezzanines are on the backside, which the backside of the units are two inches away from the wall. So they're going to attempt to cut in the ductwork in the top and see if they can come in from the top. Otherwise, they're gonna have to disconnect the whole unit and pull the whole thing away from the wall to get to it. But the leak has been found.
Anything else for Chad? Thank you. Adam?
Mine's not nearly as riveting. I do have to say although we do not want carpet in the hallways because if you kind of walk down the hallways right now because it's so wet outside, it smells like wet dog in the hallways with the kids' sweatpants hanging up and their mittens and everything, so no carpet, please. Um, we did send report cards home with kids on Monday, so if parents haven't seen those, they are actually in the child's possession, so they can contact us if they didn't get one, or perhaps we did one, but we did send those home on Monday. We finished our fourth grade MCA testing lead to date at North. We'll start the MCA testing at South next week and then we'll start the third grade next week at North as well. So that's how it was a riveting time for kids. Chelsea Sutherland has accepted our special education position for next year, so I'm sorry. Susan, we took your great para, but she's gonna be a great addition to our staff at North, so that's wonderful. We're interviewing your music teacher on Monday and then hope to interview for our elementary position at the end of next week as well.
Any questions for Natalie?
Thank you. Susan?
All right, we're kind of short and sweet this month too. Lots of fun stuff since our last board meeting. Our robotics team, first year ever, went up to the um, Grand Forks competition and um, you know, the week before they were gonna leave, Ben Justin and I had a conversation, like the robot's not even moving, we're a little nervous, what do we do? And Kent Rosen worked with them and assured him, like, you show up and you will get support. And then he said, he has never seen anything so amazing. It's like we walked in the door and there were people helping and they included the kids and he said it was just the most amazing experience and I think the kids would all echo that. I've invited them to the May 4th school board meeting with the robot, so I'm, so I'll hopefully be able to be here and share that with you. So that'll be very cool. Um, they did a great job, they had the highest ranking in a rookie team there, so it was kind of cool. And then they got a few different awards for innovation awards and that kind of thing. They, uh, got a lot, when you're there, the other teams hand out um, awards to teams that really respect and stuff. And our kids got a ton of awards for being just really respectful, really open to help, um, really working, like never giving up, just kind of working. So T, they got coins from a bunch of teams and being like, like other teams were really proud of them for being there and going through with it. So, uh, so that was a, a win. Um, they're also really excited about the opportunity for the program to grow um, because they think that, um, it's had such good publicity. We played the competitions in the, the building that whole day and so it was pretty cool. Uh, we finally got to go on our ski trip. Um, Shelley, we like worked so hard on that and just hung in there, hung in there and finally got to go and that was great. Um, and then on that same day, the fourth graders came over um, and helped with Food for Kids. We partnered them with some of the high school kids, that was great. Um, Jeff Swenson asked if we could host it here and we did. It turned out really, um, a really great event, we only did it for a couple of hours. We're hoping maybe next year, since we tried it out and it worked, we could do it a little bit longer, invite down, involve more of the grades um, in on that Food for Kids event. Um, thank you to Senora and NFHS students, we had an amazing March Madness week last week. Um, it, um, it was just really, really well planned this year and we kind of threw it for a loop because we had to, the way the early out date changed with speech and stuff, they had to plan a morning of March Madness, um, which was a little bit of a, um, a, a little, a big change, but they handled it really well. Um, you know, we had ice cream bars at 9 o'clock in the morning, so that was all good, everyone's happy. Um, they added a staff basketball game, which was good and all the kids got to be involved this time. Fifth and sixth grader involved the whole day, it was, yeah, just a really great day. Um, we, we got our milk, our milk dispensers, we got our funding for that. Um, so we have ordered two, um... Um, so we have ordered two, um, triple dispenser units. However, most of the materials for those are back ordered, so we're not really sure when we're gonna get them. Mr. Swatsky's working with his FFA kids on how they can do some training with our kids when they do come in, on how, this is how you use them, this is what we're gonna do and be able to start as soon as we get our, all the materials for that. Wednesday, March 16th, Interquest is the company we work for that comes in with the dogs. Typically, we do them three times a year. Um, again, it's been a little weird lately cause of COVID. They came in, um, they searched lockers, locker rooms and classrooms and the good news was we found nothing. I think that's a good, right? Um, our interview process has been amazing, was super lucky, really, um, had really great candidates and, and both of the candidates that, um, I talked to about positions or yeah, that we had, they were, were very, very, um, excited to accept as long as the school board is, is accepting as well, so, um, yeah, so we're, we're full right now.
Do you wanna provide a, since that's under general consent items, a brief overview of the two staff members that you're recommending for Hyatt?
Okay. Um, so the secondary position is Richard Iver Masterson and he is, he's a new, new graduate. Um, he is, has a strong background in chemistry, which is really great for us to try to fill that high school position, finding those chemistry physics teachers are tough. And so he had, ran really strong recommendations from his college and, and his, um, for, his, um, supervising teachers at his internships. And he was very excited to get to come here, so. And then Zach Jacobson is on step three. He, um, did, um, traveling, um, teaching position, was in New Zealand for a while and he, he finished and, and taught in Connecticut for a year and, um, was moved back to the area and he's in Morris and so he was just finishing up in Morehead that year there and then he'll, um, come here just.
Closer commute for him then?
Yes.
By far.
Yes, yup. So that was exciting for him. Well, and actually right now he's in Wilmer, so he did Morehead and then moved to Wilmer and now he's, he's here, cause they've been traveling from Morris for a year. So really excited about that opportunity too. So that'll be a great fit.
Any other questions for Susan? Thank you. Diane, do you wanna give a business office update?
Mine is short and sweet too tonight. Excuse me. On March 7th, Lake's Country Service Club notified us that they will not be able to help secure food service distributor for next year. Their direct to manufacturer program won't be implemented until the 23, 24 school year, so that put everything back on us for next year again. Michelle Frickman, Food Service Director, has been trying to contact different distributors. She didn't hear back from a few, she heard back from two that said, no, we weren't in their area, they couldn't help us. One of them has contacted her and sounds very promising. We don't have anything signed yet, but keep your fingers crossed. And they'll take care of the commodities, the supplies and the food. Commodities were also a big issue because they're stored in the warehouse or down in the cities and they have to be trucked out somehow. And so we needed a company that'd be willing to go get them and bring them out here. The state's been taking care of it this year, but they said they will not do it next year. And, um, we haven't heard anything from the USDA yet about free lunches and breakfast for next year, but there is a bill making its way through the state legislature that wants to, the state to take that out and stuff, so stay tuned, keep your fingers crossed that that'll happen. Just one more thing, you know, the last board meeting, there was some discussion about adding a prom account, which was done and Ally got that built and it's all taken care of. And this, it was a new thing to have, for the board to have to do because of the student activity accounts being brought under board control for statute, being via statute the last couple of years, it just happened. And so because of that, Ally has put together a set of, a binder for each organization or each group, now that has the roles, the purpose of the group, the forms that are needed, all of the, just lined up really nice. And she's got that all put together and ready to give out to the advisors. So if the advisors change over there, so they can go from advisor to advisor to advisor. So they're gonna be really great. And that's all I have today.
Any questions for Diane? Dale, that brings us to you.
Okay, COVID update again, we're still really well, we have one student in the secondary building that's tested positive. And within our area, within the Horizon area, Governor's Grand Pope, Stevens, Trevers, we're all showing low, uh, communication or, um, transmission of the, of the virus. And for the, the county of Grants right now, we have one person identified under Grants' number, that was, as of last Thursday. Kevin Lowly, um, our staff members have completed their, their requests, they've submitted them to Ally, she's created a spreadsheet, Diane, Ally and I went, went through that document and, um, the original requests exceeded about $380,000. Diane, Ally and I went through that and we moved some things to technology, we moved some things to ESSER funding, we moved some to LTFM, but we're still at about 320 and that's about a hundred thousand dollars over, over last year. So we need to trim, so I'll be talking to Natalie and Susan and, and Chad, Jake and Kevin about, okay, where can we redo some costs here? One of the things that seems probably the most obvious is, is, uh, furniture, uh, especially at the elementary building, we had a lot of teachers requesting desks and, and tables and, and granted that need might be there, but if the district passes a, a building bond referendum, those things would be rolled into that, which then doesn't take money away from the general fund. So, uh, that's, we'll have a very serious conversation about that. There were some staff members that, that have requested, uh, alternative seating for their classroom and those are things that we can probably fit into our ESSER funding and, and have paid for by the federal government because we're, we're working with a, a high risk student, uh, working with some behaviors in which it would not, uh, qualify there. Staffing, um, thank you to Natalie and, and Susan for getting on these vacancies right away because applicants are gonna be short, they're gonna be short supply, so we had early resignations, early return notices. We're in a position now, we're true get, some of the better candidates applying, uh, they're on the wall, they're ready to look for a job, so we filled with good people. If, if we'd had a delay in that process of seeking applicants, we might not be doing as well, so Chrissy deserves, um, some of the credit also because she's the one that keeps our notices and our vacancies posted and published, so, so that's working out quite well for us. And, and with, um, with, um, general consent items, you see some retirements again for people that are longstanding employees, I mean, WC has had people work here for their careers, I mean, they, they started, were starting here very young, they, they've worked in individual districts, they became part of the cooperative in 1995 and, uh, you don't easily replace those people. They, they, it's hard to replicate that connection that they have, so we've been very fortunate to have people that have committed to the district and we, we hope that that same type of commitment continues. Dean of Students Committee again, just as Susan said, we, we had a, a good pool of applicants to go for, also we had seven apply and, and I wasn't, I didn't know how many we'd get. We thought four kinda stood out about, about the others and some of the others that applied it really had to do primarily with, you know, lack of experience in the classroom. They were pretty new to the profession, pretty new to the elementary classroom, so, you know, it wasn't because they were probably good instructors or good in the position at the Hill, they just didn't have the experience or the qualifications some, some of the others have. So our, our committee for interview was, was Natalie and myself, Chrissy, and then two representatives from South and two from North. And we interviewed the four and after the interview process, we talked about qualifications and we decided we want a little more information about three kind of rose to the top. So we got information, we came back together again and kinda narrowed it down to two then and, and thought, okay, where do we go? We had our discussion and through our discussion and the input that we received from, um, our staff members, Natalie and I made determination that we would like to offer a position to, um, Eric Chomber. And then as far as contract, had a conversation with Michelle, Michelle about, can you, where we place him on, uh, within the contract, because it's a negotiated piece. So the, the salary component for him was a little bit less than, than Naomi, because Naomi's been in the position for four years. Uh, the benefit for insurance stayed consistent, the benefit for 403B stayed consistent, because Michelle had worked to get those amounts consistent as we moved from, um, the dean positions to principal, the superintendents, we wanted to keep that, uh, that continuity that's been established. And then, um, sent the contract to, to Mr. Scholomower and, and then he asked about a, a leave of, of absence to, you know, see how the position might work. So conversation with Michelle again about that process and provided an opportunity for him for a, a, a one-year kind of exploration opportunity that if he would like to go back to a physical education position within the district, he would make that decision by February 1st of next year and then providing the opportunity to go back into HPE, that's where he's licensed, is in that area. He's not licensed elementary, is an elementary instructor, he's, he's licensed for physical education, uh, K through 12 and health, V through eight. So, uh, there would be placement back in the district, even if he would choose not to stay in the position. So we did give his signed package, we sent, we sent it to Resort, approved it for, uh, that replaced, we made signatures from Michelle and so. So that's all I have unless you have questions.
I have two questions. Um, one is, and this might be a split question between, uh, the two of you. Our capital improvements budget has been $200,000 for as long as I've been on the board, so it's probably been $200,000 for a lot longer than that. So my question is, knowing that each year the dollar doesn't stretch as far as it did the year before, what is the process for evaluating if that dollar amount needs to shift at all? Cause each year, you know, a chair eight years ago was probably less expensive than a chair is today, as an example. So is, I mean, my first question, is the $200,000 a sufficient amount, knowing that the dollar doesn't stretch as far as it did years ago when I was on the board?
Well, I, I, I think your question ties, it goes beyond capital life. Because if you look at, Diane's done a year-to-date comparison of our, our budget for expenditures and revenue for FY '22. And so, so with that, she's provided the document that, that's available, I made it available to you. We're projecting about a $230,000 deficit and right now we're at-
392,000.
392,000.
General fund.
And Diane's very cautious about saying this is a preliminary figure, uh, it's not set in stone because it takes so well to record with the others. So when we look at facing a, a deficit again, we have a fund balance in the, in the neighborhood of $4 million total. So if we're, you, you know, facing a potential deficit with our other operations, then if we do, do an increase for capital life, then we're kind of compounding the problem. So I think what we need to do is, is come back with proposals for our, our April 16th meeting, we might have a better understanding of where we are financially and then make a decision if that should go up. I, I think we're doing, we did very well with our staff over the last two years for putting classroom supplies into the classroom and, and providing technology, because those are easily tied to ESSER. So what we're doing now is, you know, physical seating and those kinds of things. There are some things that we have to do, such as licensures and there's our, some, some technology upgrades that we need to make. Kevin put in one, it's a, a 16 and $20,000, um, unit for camera system, so going for fight, right securing the building, then this unit controls the, the cameras to make sure that we can record. It'd be kind of embarrassing situation for us if we have an intruder or something that explains and we wanna watch the video and we just don't have it because our primary unit that allows that to happen isn't available. So there are some things we're just, we're forced to spend money on. So those go to the top of the list obviously. So I, I appreciate your, your question, I appreciate the, the interest you're taking providing for our staff and I think our staff would be appreciative knowing that, that you're supportive of that, that regard.
But, so the second part of my question was related to, and, and I understand, you know, if we go through a building bond project, that, you know, furniture fixtures and equipment, is a part of that budget, but also knowing, just like when we're talking about with an HVAC system, what you can and can't take to a new building, those are things that can be taken to a new building if a new building ever exists. And with us being, I mean, if you pass a building bond this year, it's two or three years before you're in a new building anyway. So, you know, when I, when I look at the work that Kevin's put in to have a, um, rotation of Chromebooks, I, I wonder why we haven't thought about doing that with furniture? Maybe it's just cause it hasn't come up, but I know furniture with teachers in particular has been, it's been a sensitive subject through, uh, many different capital improvement, um, cycles that we've gone through. I hate to say, we're going to wait to invest anything in furniture at the elementary level until a building bond passes, hoping that that, that they will come. I think we all hope that they will come, but if there are needs now that our teachers have, and not talking about it would, it, I prefer this style over this style, talking about, you know, this desk is more functional in a classroom than what we have that's been here for 15 years. I would assume that those things are being taken into consideration, but I just wanted to address that.
They are, as the teachers are making their lists for what they would like inside their classroom. I mean, we've kind of, you know, done the same thing, we thought, well, we're referring them past, we'll be getting furniture, so we, they've kind of held off, but we're at the point now where some of our desks and chairs, we can't, we can't hold off anymore. And adding the second, uh, specialized teacher, we need to furnish her classroom, so she needs chairs and a horseshoe table and, I mean, you know, those things that roll out with that.
It's, I think as long as our staff has the understanding of it, it, there's a big difference between, I need something-
Yes.
And I want something and if it's, I need something-
We're pretty, we're pretty clear on that too, so it's kind of, yeah.
The last couple of years of, I would lay that we've had, like, single, large, single item that's been a year, like the tool cap was on there, right? And then the year before that, the suburban was on there, so that was 60,000 or whatever, so.
Homem, uh, stoves, we've been working through homem.
Yeah, that's kind of been an ongoing thing, but I mean, there was, there was a couple last two years in a row, for sure, there's been some real large items, so if you keep the dollar amount the same, if, if there is, I don't know what's on this year, but I mean, if there isn't anything like that, we're gonna get an extra 50, 60,000, if we keep it at the same number.
There, there isn't, so when you look at this figure, there's no item that large. Um, there, there is, um, a co-curricular item that's at $25,000, but, um, uh, nothing that's in the, the range of a suburban or a tool cap.
Yeah, so in essence, we're getting 50, 60,000 more. I know.
Yup.
Not exactly.
There, there's more going to-
The dollar goes further.
Spread around, we'll get, get more pieces.
So if we take a look at it, if we're looking at 220, 225, and you take out, you know, $60,000 for tool cap, we were printing about $160,000 to the other items, now we're looking at putting, you know, $61,000 to the other items, so. But I, I, I think Natalie said it pretty well, these are, um, extravagant requests, you know, it's things that, you know, are, are probably needed.
We fixed the desk four times and we can't get it to shut down.
You can't put a match.
We got a ratchet strap.
Thanks for entertaining my questions. Any other questions or comments for Dale, based on his superintendent report?
Uh, now, if you're, if you want to take like a three-minute recess, five-minute recess, we think we're going on just two hours.
Correct, absolutely, let's take a, let's take, well, so there's a-
For the next two hours.
So Mr. Gersh, you're making a motion to take a five-minute recess? And do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Roll call, Christiansen?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Esposito, Estabalik?
Yes.
Strunk?
Yeah.
And Ulrich.
Sure, why not?
All right, well, we convene at 7:25.
See, we're, we're drowning now.
Yeah.
Why didn't we do this?
Discussion between a group two and a group six participation.
I took a, I'll take it a little bit different, I guess. Group two is, is actually school-related boosters organizations, local organized, organized local nonprofit youth groups, church groups, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, four age clubs. And for meetings of thirty or less. And then C, which was put together while I was on the, pretty much everybody here was on board except for Kayla at the time, was youth sports teams and associations in parentheses athletic feeder programs, et cetera. And that's what we're, we're discussing here is athletic feeder programs that our students, a significant, significant amount of our students are a part of. So back, it's, it's really, you're not asking to change anything, it's, it's how it was, it's really, if you're changing anything, it's the wording of how it's interpreted because, I guess, I was part of these discussions back in twenty nineteen, I think it started with Barry in April and, and then went on through to Dale and that. And this specific instance was talked about at that time specifically. And, and I think that the intent was for a group like that to be a two. At least, that's how I, how I see it. And if it's a six, it, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, it's just how it's interpreted. All, all I'm saying is, that's how I, how I see it as the intent.
You're saying that you read it as if one of our students is participating in it, then it should be in the group two. Is that what you're saying?
Well.
Because I mean, obviously, it's gonna be a situation where, because I mean, obviously, we know a lot of the Wildcat teams are, who are using it right now.
Yep.
And so, if, if we're saying that if we have students who are participating on a Wildcat team and their teams are gonna use here, is that student then qualify them on your group two, or because it is not affiliated with our school, shouldn't it be on group six? I think that's what we're trying to clarify there.
Yeah.
Because I mean, you open it up that if there's a Wildcat team that wants to practice here and there's not a current enroll two, then are they a six? Because there's no one on that team that they wanna use a facility, but there's no one on that team that goes to our school. You know, that's, because that's really, that's probably the only outside group right now that is requesting use of our facilities is probably the Wildcat program.
Yeah, it is. I think twenty-one students and currently there's, and three staff members at school.
Oh, we have four, there's, it's actually, the biggest thing is to be able to use it on the weekends because, you know, especially the demand that we talked about earlier, right now, on the sports teams. Uh, being able to use the, the gym facilities on the weekend would be, would be huge, especially.
Right, because right now, you can't use it unless you're a staff member on the weekend, and that's a key.
And there's, and there, like, yeah, we have four, there's four staff members, or plus like a couple of graduated students, Abby Wolfberg and Abby Van Kappen, both coach teams. Kim Nelson coaches from Ashby, there's one coach from Grant, I mean, there's, and the biggest thing, you know, there's three hundred, there's three hundred kids participating in, in the program right now. You know, there's thirty teams, and there's thirty-five different schools, all the way from Park Rapids to Minneonaun and west central areas, right in the middle. I mean, so it's a, it's a great representation for our schools, while our facilities. And if we have, if we have, like we discussed in the buildings and grounds meeting as well, if we have a, a staff member, um, that's willing to be here and supervise, and take, make sure that our facility is being taken care of, lock it up when they're done. To me, there shouldn't be no reason why we shouldn't be able to use it on the weekends, like I used to run men's state basketball ten years up north. Get there Sunday night, make sure everything is swept before before everybody gets there, make sure the lights are turned on, I mean, that's, that's simple. So there shouldn't be any reason why we're limited to, um, not being able to use the facilities on the weekend, in my opinion. As long as we have somebody willing to take care of it.
Also say, it's one thing when you have a staff member that has the key and is the coach, but if you're, but it would be a situation where that would be the only ones that would, it would work for. You wouldn't have somebody that is a coach from another school.
Right, then they most likely wouldn't be asking in that case.
Right.
And that, you know, those are two, those are the two, they're really two separate issues. And it, and it's fine, you know, I mean, it, if it, if a, if the board determines, or if that was the intent was for a group like that to be a six, then that's what it is. But then there's a separate issue that the policy doesn't allow us to use, the school policy doesn't allow us to use the facilities on the weekend at all for anybody. Not just that particular team, it's for anything. Right now, it says, you can use it for, you know, during custodial use, which, I mean, on the weekend, the policy should, at, at bare minimum, be modified to be able to use it on the weekend. Because as long as there's, uh, you know, somebody that's available, that has a key, if you don't wanna give out the key, that, that's a whole different issue. Do you wanna get a, some type of a deposit or something, you, does the board wanna go that far? Or do you just want it to people that, like, have key to that specific facility, like Barrett, or Elbe Lake, or Kensington?
If you, so, when you put a policy into place, it has to be something that's consistent regardless of the, the person you're talking about, right? So the one issue that I foresee is, if it's not a staff member that has a key, and when you open it up for weekend use, you have to have a staff member that takes time to unlock the facility, unlock the facility, which is fine, doesn't sound like a ton of work, but you have to designate someone that's gonna do that, so, I mean, that's.
I think you're saying that the staff members would be that person.
They're laid out, they're laid out to volunteer their time.
Yeah, it would be, so, like, this situation where the staff member who is a coach would come here and use the building with their.
Right, but when we talk about a policy.
It don't even have to be a coach, like I talked to Shelley, and she said, if a Wildcat team, or, or, let's just say whatever team it is, leave the specific organizations out of it, but if somebody wanted to use it, like, but, as it pertained to that, like she said, I'd be willing to come and be the supervisor, you know, because I have a key to this facility, stay in, you'd be the first one here and the last one to leave. It's the same thing with Elbe Lake, or Kensington, whoever had the, has the keys to there, if they're willing to do it, I mean, it's really no different than open gym, it, I mean, it's, the whole thing is, it's currently being done now, anyway.
Yep, so, from a policy standpoint, if you take that, that particular example situation out of the picture, and you say, across the board from an implementation standpoint, if we change the policy and say that we will always have weekend accessibility, that those facilities are always available, then it's the school district's responsibility to make sure that happens.
Under these conditions.
He might have a staff member that volunteers.
It's available under these conditions, and which, I mean, there's kind of conditions now, right? It, because it doesn't have to be a custodian, it says, it can be, or in certain circumstances, a capable WCA staff member. Must, it says, must be on duty whenever the building facilities are used, so, but.
But if someone wants to use a facility on a Sunday, for example, and we don't have a staff member there, and we change the policy, just so that everyone understands what, what we're committing to if we change the policy, it now becomes our responsibility, I say our, the district's responsibility, to find someone that will unlock that facility if someone like Shelley isn't available to do it, which, if that's the direction we wanna go, that's fine.
I think what, I think what you would be the other way around, if you say that, that you had, that's their response, I mean, it would be, they would have to find that person, I don't think that's our responsibility.
They would have to find, they'd have to find that person that's willing to do that.
Is that fair and equal access to everyone? Not everyone's gonna know what staff member, like Shelley, that they can say, hey, are you willing to unlock the door for me on the weekend?
I guess I would ask the question, then, will it be a hierarchy? So if you talk about the Wildcat program and there's two kids in the program from our school, and there's eight from another school, and we have a youth organization of fourth graders, that's all our kids, did the fourth graders get hierarchy over the Wildcats, or, and can those coaches get, because it's probably a parent, or whatever, can they get access to open that facility? Because if you're talking about opening on weekends, then those youth organizations that haven't been able to do that and can't get an evening for anything in the gym are, are gonna wanna use those days too.
That is true, that we, I know, the booster teams are gonna wanna use it if we open it up, because there's already not hard, they already have a hard enough time getting enough space.
And I'm, I'm just saying, I wanna avoid a situation where, and I don't think this is the intention, but I, I wanna avoid a situation where, because I know Shelley, I can get the gym unlocked without paying a fee, but because Gary doesn't know Shelley, Gary has to pay a fee, and the school then has to write a stamp for her.
My, no, the fee part doesn't, well, the fee part didn't have any, that's, that's just which group it is in, that's not accessibility part, that part isn't.
Can I just?
Yeah, go ahead.
If it is something that we need to, which it just seems sad that we have these great spaces that sit empty on the weekends, right? But, um, just, um, you know, I think about Mindy trying to do the scheduling in the office and how ready it's quite difficult. And, um, so for her to ask questions about, you know, do you have someone to unlock for you, do, so it'd have to be, if it's gonna go to that, it'd have to be pretty concrete for her, so she doesn't have to start making the judgment call of who's gonna get in and not get in, and, and trying to find something to open for them, and whatever, so, I don't know, I just don't want it to become a burden for her.
Wouldn't that be part of the facility use, um, form that people would fill out, they would have their, their, their contact person, or they're, they would have to have somebody, I would, I would put the responsibility on the group or whoever, to, to make sure that they can find a person, have it on the form.
Yeah.
I agree, I would hope so.
Maybe there would be. I wouldn't wanna put that on Mindy or anybody.
Right.
And maybe there would, would be a, maybe there would be an availability of, there, maybe there is a group of staff members that would like to put their name on a list that, just, you know, that says,
I'm willing to have you.
If, if I'm, if I'm available, I don't mind doing that, if.
Yeah, if it benefits the kids or anything, we can do that. You said use the facilities on the weekend or something, because if that's the only time where it works for, you know, some of these coaches or teams or groups to get together, then, you know, why, why can't we have them available?
And it's good for our kids that they're not having to travel.
Right.
I mean, I talked to another person, a coach today, it, it was great being able to use a facility on Monday because I, I had a different meeting right here at the school, and then I'm there, I was able to go right there, didn't have to drive them, I wanted to come on a video or wherever. And that also means our kids that are in that group don't have to make that trip either, they're, but our, I mean, we should, we should address, I, I, I think we should be addressing the policy for sure from the standpoint of being able to allow our facility to be used on the weekend. When, when it's possible, and yeah, you, you know, based on the group that you're in, you're gonna get bumped, you know, per se, you know. Which isn't an issue, I don't know anybody that has an issue getting bumped through the school program, or, or the next layer of it, program, or the next layer of it, but.
So, my question is, how long has, have the weekends been off limits for use? Is there, is there something that prompted that, that?
I don't, because I was just thinking, like, I remember years ago, and it was before I was on the board, but Randy Peterson used to unlock the south gym and have a Saturday open gym.
Well, we have, we have open gyms, that's why we have to have somebody else needed to do it, because we had open gyms just a couple of years ago.
Yeah, but Randy has no affiliation with the school, what I'm saying is that he volunteered his time.
Yep.
Yep.
To go down there on a Saturday and be there and have open gym for kids, so we haven't always not allowed use of our facilities.
We still do that.
That's what we got.
We still do that, and I've done that both guilty.
Is what basically what that was.
I was given a key position back in the day to do it here.
And, and Elbe Lake, I've done that at Elbe Lake, Barrett for years. So you weren't following the policy?
It was. It's, well, you can go on the activity schedule right now.
Well, I mean, maybe the policy is broke, right? Well, I, I will say that when I couldn't, when I came, neither myself or Wade Nibby knew the lockbox code at North, I just called somebody from the community and they told me what it was.
Danny members from Kensington also have keys.
But the, but like, the open gym was done, the community ed, you know, so.
It was a set time, yeah.
Naomi, Naomi knew, Naomi knew who was the supervisor during that period of time, and if we had any issues, we'd, you know, well, it depends, there never was any issues, but if you had an issue, you're either gonna call Naomi, or you're gonna call Kathy, or you're gonna call Jake, or you're gonna call, there just never was.
So.
Haven't had any issues.
Back to Dale's question.
And it's not, and it's not just our kids that are in, at the open gym, and I tell you that for a fact, there's kids from Ashby, Oakhurst that have shown up because it's on Facebook and.
Right. Yep. But back to Dale's question, so, did someone request to use a gym on a weekend and they got denied for it, or what, where did that change come from?
No, no.
Or no one's ever asked for it, or asking for it?
I wanna call the policy.
I think it was just the key entrance locked, there's nobody in there to open it, so.
I wanna make sure that doing this is okay.
You don't really use the gym if somebody had to have a key, there was no way to get into school unless someone had a way to get in. So I suppose it wasn't a policy because not everyone has a key, so you'd have to, that's probably the only reason it was done.
So is it, so if the facility use form was successful and there was a list of volunteers for the three different schools, these are people that you could contact to see if they will allow you to get in on a Saturday or Sunday, would that get us where you're looking to go, if you're saying that there are staff members that are, you know, yep, you can call me if I'm, if I'm around, I certainly will be able to unlock the door for you.
Yeah, well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be, you know, somebody then has to be responsible, right? I mean, it's just like, when you go for open gym, if you're the one that's responsible, like Maya and I have been many times, you're the first one there and the last to leave, and you check everything and make sure everything's.
I think having a list, I mean, being, that, that sounds administratively terrifying, but that's just my point, is like, like, all different people being like, oh yeah, I wanna use a gym, here's a list, and then I gotta call these people and find somebody, and then for Mindy to know that that's been lined up and it's all figured out, I, it just doesn't, there's gotta be a some other way to make it work, so it's not a question mark for everybody, because it's still gonna be a question mark, because Mindy's not gonna know if, if they have somebody.
That's the hard part on the weekend, because there is no, there, you know, theoretically, there's nobody there unless we had some automated system that unlocked it and locked it, but it's, we don't have that, so.
The only question mark is if they found somebody to open it for them, or otherwise, they're just outside, so.
I mean, they're, they're, based on what you're saying, then we're talking about having someone that's assigned on the call.
Well, I don't know, I'm just thinking, like, I booked the facility, I, you know, I mark a box that says I need somebody to open the gym, or I try to call people, I tell my team, I'm coming here, everybody practices at two on Sunday, and then I get here, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand how, how that works out, but.
Find your own person for that specific building, I mean.
You know, the, the risk, though, is I suppose, if you, you know, if it's all loose like that, then, you know, what additional stress could it be on the janitorial staff? Not everybody will probably clean up, and, you know, you're gonna get.
I'd hope so, I wouldn't use it.
You would hope so, right?
Because it's already being done.
If the demand is that big, it's probably a consideration that.
It's happened for years, I mean, back, back, Hallie was, you know, several years ago, probably three, four years ago, when she was in jail, we always used it on Sundays, it always was Sunday. Kendra was, I don't know how they got in, Kendra was the, you know, director at that time, but it was always, practice was always on Sunday at North.
Is there an agreement form, like a, um, responsibilities agreement form you sign and say, when, you know, basically, and when I leave, it will look like it did when I came?
Yeah, it's in the policy, yeah, that's provisioned in the policy.
Well, individuals can find their, their staff room to assist on, our, our staff members are available on our website, right, Kevin? You know, so, I mean, if, if they have connection with all those people, they could reach out to that person and ask for permission, ask them to, to attend.
Could be the supervisor.
Yeah.
And then they would have to provide that on their form, their form for use.
I think most people that are gonna be contacting that are outside, they're gonna have a contact, they're gonna know Shelley, they're gonna know somebody, they're gonna have that, it's not gonna be just random.
Literally, they're not gonna ask, they're gonna look through different avenues.
I think as, as long as it can be administratively figured out, and it's not troublesome, I don't know why we, we already have trouble sharing the spaces that we have, so adding two more days and allowing them to use it would be beneficial for the whole year.
You're, you're, you're multiplying the availability for your students and or, you know, for your students, basically, you're, you're, you're multiplying it by at least close to sixteen times, because currently, the only time in a, anybody outside of that school sport deal, you get, you got from six to eight, that's it.
Right.
No other time, so it's six to eight, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and now you're automatically adding sixteen hours to each spot, so you're.
May I make a quick comment?
Yeah.
The one piece that I see, just listening to all of this, that could potentially be a positive, is I, I, I keep hearing people say, well, it's happening anyways, we're using it, not telling anyone. That, that, that part would, this could potentially fix that part of it, because that's kind of a huge issue.
That's all for now, so.
I'd like to make a comment too, like, I don't see anything in the agreement about how far out, like, what if there's a group that decided to call up and schedule out every third Saturday of every month?
That's true.
Like, how do you set parameters around that?
Yeah, because that would be the tricky part, is because you don't want somebody from outside in group six putting stuff out, and then having group two's need to get in, you know.
And they're not using it, that, and making it available.
How would you know if it's being used?
It's on a schedule, you're scheduling chronically, so the, the time slot is blocked out.
Yeah, that's hard for you, you hope people are, and I think, I'm pretty sure right now, the people that are using the gym, if, if they schedule a time and they're not able to use it, they're, they're calling and saying, hey, I don't need, I don't need that anymore, so give it up to somebody else.
You know, that might not be an, an issue, because if you've got a team that wants to do it, they're probably gonna look for a ninety-minute block or two, or a block of time, you know, on a weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and, you know, e- even if they schedule that for eight weeks, they're taking that spot, that does, I mean, there's, there's other spots available.
It's different, we were talking about having the whole day available versus two hours, so, I don't know if that's an issue or not.
There'll be times that it would be totally blocked out, or, you know, like booster turnt or.
Right.
What are your concerns, Chad?
Cleanliness, and the same concerns that I've had since I've been here, is just, we, we've got keys out and everybody in the community can get in anyway. The other thing is, is previously to me, there's been key issues, and I know that there's a lot of people that are having masters, and not just keys. Ideally, I would love to rekey all three buildings and start from scratch.
From a crisis management perspective, we've got secured entrances, but we don't have secure buildings, that's not a problem.
Yes. We've got secured entrances, but we've got completely unsecured communities. They all have keys, that's what is. But, I mean, you know, like they say, for the most part, there is stuff going on in here all the time, I'll stop in when I do boiler checks and things like that, there's people at North, there's people in this gym here, they're running around.
Is there a way to do a trial run of, so, without it going specifically into policy, can we just make a motion to?
Well, I think that should be something, right, we identify group two, I mean, several areas here, we identify six thirty-eight and the eight P M. Monday for Friday. So, by simply adding a sentence that says, um, facility would be available on weekends from eight A M. until eight P M. On Saturdays and Sundays, non-school days, um, provided they have, um, a school employee who's serving as the monitor. And it could be the coach, it could be somebody else. So, i- if we do that, and, and to change this, that can be done, you know, on, on April twentieth. You know, if I change the language and provide it to you, and if that's what you as a board, you know, choose to do, then it's changed, and it's changed immediately.
It's not, if it's not working, it's not for to go back and change it back, you know.
Exactly, that's the whole, that's, that's a part of the, if it doesn't work, you make an adjustment again.
We gotta get you back full group on it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think, you know, from a cleanliness, you know, I think that, I don't, I haven't looked at the facility use in a long time, but making sure that, that the cleanliness part of it is addressed, you know, and even sometime, it's not unusual in a facility use agreement to see, you know, if they're, if custodians have to go in and clean up a space because it was left unclean, to bill back to that organization the amount, that a thirty-dollar cleaning fee or whatever, you know.
I think if you're assigning a staff person to be responsible, they're, they're, they're not gonna leave it a mess, because it's gonna fall back on them.
But I think understanding is.
But you don't always know, because if you have multiple people in the, in the facility.
That's true, you don't know which ones got in.
You don't know who it is, so you'd have to have something specified that if you arrive at the, the space that you're, you can occupy, if it's in disarray when you arrive, you need to make a report.
Yeah.
Yep. And I don't think it's intentional, like, the, I was just talking to Diane Johnson about the, um, the Hoffman space, and you had some Southboat girls that were practicing there, and she said, they intended to clean up, absolutely, they knew that they were tracking things in, and so they took the room, and then went around the room, and they cleaned stuff up, but they, they pushed it into corners, and so they still had to take another room, pull everything out of the corners, and clean that space again. If, a lot of times, it's not intentional, and I'm not saying you would charge a cleaning fee for that, but I think you have to be specific about, you know, what you're looking for people, how you want them to leave that space when they leave, you know, just giving some basic parameters, and it, a lot of times, it's a communication thing, you know, do they know that?
Well, like you said, it boils down to, if you've got three different groups on Saturday coming in, you know, each one's gonna say, well, it was like that when I came in, it wasn't me, it must've been the guys before us, you know.
That's where that brand new camera system comes in.
No, thank you.
There is no brand new camera system in the gym. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be any worse than we have right now, you know, nothing's gonna change, like I said, there's keys all over the place, there's teachers that have keys, there's teachers right now that have master keys that don't, don't have master keys, because keys were just handed out to try and get them into doors, and.
I don't, and, and, you know, even just to the point of, um, some community members having keys, right, it's, I mean, that piece of it separately, I think, has to be, crisis management was put on the back burner because we had to deal with COVID, and now we're talking about those things again, I think that has to be figured out, um, if there's a lot of duplicate keys that are out there right now. And that's completely separate from the facility use issue that we're talking about.
That's a difference. But as far, as far as weekends and stuff go, I mean, yeah, as, as long as things are picked up, and I, you know, I, I think it will be, the other aspect is, is a lot of these, I mean, even now, when I've been so short-staffed on that end, I mean, the, the basketball players and stuff, they're getting dust mops, because they wanna clean floor anyways. You know, you're not gonna play on something that's a skating rink when you're a basketball player. So, I mean, they're, they're going ahead and taking care of, trying to at least dust mop and stuff that they can. So I, I think that that will be taken care of and be helped, and yes, I mean, there's, just about every morning, I come in and there's piles in the corner, but at least they're keeping it off the floor, and they're trying to keep respect for the floor. And we can deal with taking five minutes to sweep up the piles.
Well, and people don't know where to put it, like, where, you know, if you don't give any direction, I'm gonna push it into a corner too, because I don't know what to do with it.
And, yeah, I mean, it's, some of it's a hurried issue, it is more than anything.
Yeah.
The main point, you know, the main point here is, is we can use the facilities on, right now, as long as you go through community ed, you can use the facilities on the weekend anytime you want, as long as you go through there, there's no reason why the policy can't be changed to, so that you can use it outside of community ed as well, the, I mean, you can have.
So what I, what I wrote down here is just language to allow weekend use for staff members supervision, pretty basic, I'm very simple.
I'm in the outdoors.
So, so then we go back to group two, group six, language interpretation.
I guess in my opinion, any, any group that, that benefits our students should be in the group two.
Is, so, the groups, the primary purpose of them is to prioritize who has access to the space first, right?
Yeah, so is it relevant, then? What, whether it's a group two or a group six right now, because when you're talking about that type of group.
But group six pays for two dozen bucks.
It'd be a positive, it'd just be the charge.
All groups pays, I didn't realize that.
Right now, right now, it'd be fifty, it's fifty dollars if you, if you're using the whole gym, it probably isn't that, you know, not that bad, because if you're paying whatever, twelve dollars, thirteen dollars per court, you know, basically, but.
So I, the way I'm interpreting this, when I look at, group six shall be permitted the use of facilities at the applicable rental fee rates during regular custodial hours. It talks about out-of-district groups of individuals, my assumption reading that would be that we have absolutely no staff members or no students that are involved in that group.
Well, that's a good way to interpret it, I suppose, yeah, you say it that way.
There, so if you've got a Wildcats team and you've got two WCA students on there, or a WCA coach that's an employee of the district, I wouldn't have interpreted that as that's someone that's in group six.
But if some, if a coach from somewhere else was bringing their team here with nobody from our school playing for their team, they would be group six. And that makes sense, because that's what we're talking about.
That's what we discussed back when, it was, when we, it was in twenty nineteen, and I remember sitting and having Dylan Grommings about it, I couldn't find it.
So I think as long as we, as long as, as long as if there is a coach or team member that is in the district, they're group two, if, if. they're group two, if, if, if otherwise, then they're group six. Cause I don't know that you're going to have a lot of requests for teams to use it that don't have a player or a coach here, so I don't, that's why, I don't, I think it's an unissue.
I, now, group two, that language could be cleaned up to be a little less, uh, it says any youth groups or youth athletic associations within the school district. I, to me, group two is any youth groups or youth athletic associations that have affiliation with, it has a person that's affiliated with the district or however you want to word that, but that part, if I was just looking at two and not six, I might root that differently.
What was the other thing you said, we need to talk about, yeah? Six and eight?
Um.
What was the other?
No, I mean, we, we, we don't know, we don't know what it's just some language change, but group, group two versus group six.
Right. Oh, yeah.
That's still the one and
I think it's fun as a corporate.
To, to accomplish what you're, you're kind of explaining, that's to change the language of group two to become more inclusive.
Yeah.
So if it's your intent to have, uh, uh, an organization that has one WCA participant on it, they qualify as a
As a group.
Group two member, then.
Or then they jump above everybody.
Where does the money go? How much money in the past have we generated from this policy and where did it go?
We don't really, we don't.
I, I, I don't think it's, I don't look at it as, as generating revenue. I look at it as reimbursing
I think it's not a prayer.
the, the district because when, when somebody outside the district comes in, I mean, if it's a large group of non-district students coming in, there's costs for electricity, there's costs sometimes for, for cleanup, there's very small costs for water because showers tend to be aren't used anymore. But it's a, it's a power issue, you know, so, and, and not that it's a lot, but you know, our taxpayers support us, so are they open and inclined to want to support students from other communities in our facilities? That's, that's kind of, are, are we, are we being a good steward when we let?
The other way to look at it is over the, are, they're, they're supporting our students and our staff not having to go outside because they're going to still have that practice no matter what, but the difference is, they're going to come here or they buy stuff down at the gas station or they buy, or they go to the,
Yeah.
you know, supermarkets and stuff here.
Yeah.
They're still doing it, but they're going to go and spend their money someplace else and their kids are going to get home later and it'll be less after.
I don't, I don't question the benefit for our kids. You know, certainly they're, they don't have to travel, they don't have to drive someplace else. It's safer for them, they're on the, on the road for an hour, however far they have to travel. So it's safer for our athletes that would be on that Wildcat team. You know, so there's a, there's a benefit to that. And you're, you're pointing there and that our communities could benefit by, you know, a dozen people coming into town for practice. I don't know how many kids would leave here to take an hour drive without wanting to stop at a convenience store.
I stopped at Casey's every, twice a week for the last.
So do you think the most valuable customer?
No.
So are we, are we, Dale, is your interpretation that like Wildcats is not included under two C? Where it says youth sports teams and associations?
Correct.
So then what would that mean?
Because, because the heading, the heading that says any youth groups or youth athletic associations within the school district, within is the key. And that's what Jake and I have been going on for discussions and that's the direction that we've been getting maybe as well.
However, the board decides to, to do that, that, I mean, that, it is what it is. I, I just made, I'm, it's like, like I'm not mad at anybody for the way they interpreted how they felt it was, that's their interpretation. All I'm saying is, I'm part of, I was part of this policy decision in two thousand and nine and I specifically remember that this issue was talked about and that I don't personally feel like that was the intent. So either, either way, it's, this is what it is, but the weekend thing is.
So, so it's, it's not the decision administratively to decide what your intent is, that's you as a board of the community to decide and then we need to write the language that reflects that.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the way this was written and as it was designed and put together by Jake and myself, we were under the assumption that those groups would be paying a fee because the majority, a huge majority of those groups are typically from outside the district. We might have a couple of kids on an All-Star team, but, a Wildcat team, but, but not a majority. So that's what, so I mean, if that's what you as board members want to do is to make up an accommodation for any youth group that has representation from W, by, with WCA students or participants, we write that into group two and then the facility is provided free of charge.
Do we know what the Wildcats live to pay at Morris or Marshall? Are they have practices all over?
I don't understand, like last year we did a lot of practicing in Moscow and they weren't charged for that. Morris does charge a, a fee, I think, so much, uh, per quarter or something like that, I don't know what, what it was.
Cause if you've been getting more activity, they're charging like Ferguson, Morris, you know, you know, fifty bucks, so we'll get more activity, right? In the market. And we should research that a little bit before we make the final call. Cause that's really the only organization we're concerned about right now.
Is that the direction the board would like to go is?
Should we see?
To have Mr. Hoagie do a comparison maybe to some other districts that are near us?
Hello?
Or does the board?
Yeah.
Does he wish to have Mr. Hoagie to kind of revise the language based on our discussion?
I, I'm not.
Or both?
I'm, I'm not looking for.
He's not looking for more work?
I don't think there's any excuse here.
I guess we can just reach out though. Call them and there's something and ask.
Judy, Judy can tell you.
Yeah.
She's paying.
Maybe you can even just find out for yourself.
Yeah.
She'd know this. Find, we can find that out, but you know, like I said, in my opinion, any, anything that benefits what central kids. Uh, and if we can keep them like Eric said, if we can keep them, keep them local, keep them here. Help out our, our own coaches. We have a lot of people involved coaching. I mean, it's a nonprofit.
A lot of kids in there.
Wildcats is set up as a nonprofit organization.
That's the other thing, they, if they're nonprofit, all they'd have to do is just put their deal box at Barrett and then they're free anyway.
Right under number three.
It's a nonprofit, go to number three and read it.
But it's not for most organizations.
I'm, I know.
Get, get all, get all those athletes to move to WCA.
I think it's a simple fix and then we try it, if it doesn't work, like Michelle said, we can do this as easy. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
If it, I, the one thing I guess that comes to my mind is, I, I don't want to charge a fee just for the sake of charging a fee or because other people are doing it, which is not what I think you're recommending, just for the sake of conversation, like if, if we were going to say that we're going to have a staff member that's on call to unlock, okay, we have to pay that staff member.
No, no, no.
Or that custodial staff is going to clean it up, okay, then we have to pay that custodian, but if we're not requiring any of those things, we're expecting them to find someone to unlock it and they have to clean it up, it's, I mean, a couple of dollars in an increased electricity bill because the flights were on for two hours. I just, I, I get the increase, but it, it, I don't think it's that significant of an increase that it's worth charging a fee for unless we, we can explain that that fee's.
There must be some administrative cost in the sending that fee out. Right?
To, oh, sure. It's, I'd rather we, um, we've got great gyms to work with and sometimes I think they're underused from a community standpoint. I'd love to see us have the accessibility for groups like that and not to be complicated.
Agreed.
Okay, for, for both of those, um, group language and the weekend language, I'll make some, some language changes for your consideration.
Alright, thank you.
We'll move right along.
Alright, communication is good. We're done with number one of six. Okay, number two, elementary facility evaluation and HVAC options. I'm sure this will be a very quick discussion. I'm kidding. We, um, my question would be, where do we want to start this discussion? Jeremiah, supply us with some preliminary information and.
I'll start.
Go ahead, Maya. Floor is yours.
It's really there.
I think that if we're going to spend thirteen million dollars, we might as well spend twenty-five million dollars. It seems like we're going to have the exact same thing except for better air quality and, and we're, we're halfway to what we wanted to do anyway, so it seems silly to me to spend thirteen million dollars just getting a new heating system and, you know, some better air quality in these schools. I think, I think we're running down the wrong path if we do that.
So you're saying twenty-five, you're saying, where are you getting twenty-five, Maya?
I'm just saying, we're right back to the point where we put the new wing on the elementary in Elba Lake and we build a building at South and, and we take off the, you know, the secondary building things in there and we, we get a number under thirty million dollars and we, we go for another bond. That's what I'm saying.
Got it.
I guess the way, uh, maybe partly to Maya's point to look at, you know, how much we discuss and consider the HVAC options comes back to, do we foresee the elementary schools as they sit today as a long-term fifteen-year solution?
Well, if we spend the thirteen million, you know, we have to, that's, that, what we'd be saying is, spend the thirteen million to get new heating and air conditioning and both buildings and new lighting and new electrical, because that's what you're getting out of it, new ceilings. I mean, that's what you're saying if, so.
If the board decides to go that direction.
If you, if the board's going to go that direction.
I'm, I'm asking the actual question.
That means that's where everything's staying there for twenty-five years.
But I'm saying, then at that point, now you're going to start talking about ADA things and all those other things that are, you know, we don't have right now and, and now your number goes drastically higher and you still haven't addressed any of those things yet, so now you're going to try to make an old space into a new space and you're going to spend more than that money and we might as well start looking at a different, a different base.
And I, I think too, we're just, we're shuttling people back and forth, yeah, I mean, you know, when we looked at the class sections, right? We've got a second grade class with twenty-five students at one site and a second grade class with eleven students at the other site. We continue to have such huge inefficiencies, you know, I think when we, boy, at the end of the day, plus the savings we would have with the one-site facility, it's just, it's really hard to look at the long-term benefits of spending money on these old sites and having all, you know, everybody ends up here fifth grade on anyways, but we just, you know, community hasn't supported anything we've done, so it, this, when you look at it and you sit back, it's, this is by far and away the most efficient for our students and.
Like, I think that, you know, we talked about, we wanted to know what this looked like and we were going to do HVAC upgrades and do what, what we had to do, you know? But what was that number going to look like? That's what we asked this for. I mean, it's not going to come in at five million or six million. No, it's at thirteen million. And I think that, that gives us a jumping off point is, okay, well, what does thirteen million actually get us? And when you think about what we could have had or what we can have for not that much more than that, to, to tell the public, hey, we're going to come in and we're going to fix all the air and all that, but it's still going to be the same. Space.
Jeremiah didn't, they discussed, he discussed mechanical issues. He didn't talk about window replacement, he didn't talk about roofs.
Right.
Talk about changing spaces at South, the gym stays the same size, the lunchroom stays in the same location. You still have the same set of steps to go up and down to get to the lunchroom. What you get fixed is the HVAC system. That's what you get fixed. And you get lighting.
So they.
Power, so, but you don't get the other things.
Yeah.
So you, you know, we, we oftentimes really get wound up in, in the structure itself and we too often neglect the, the student aspect and the staff aspect. Yep, we're going to fix the ventilation area, but still our teachers are in rooms that aren't right-sized. They, they don't have cabinetry and storage space within the classroom. They have shelves. Um, you, you know, so, yeah, they might feel better from a health standpoint, but their appearance environment isn't going to change.
May, may I make one small comment that just adds to this conversation because I received her permission to, to use this as an example, but Heidi Wetterling moved from South Elementary to North Elementary. She was recently our Teacher of the Year, fantastic teacher. The comment she has made to me about the space difference from South Elementary to her current space in North Elementary, she has said that the, the access she has to teaching spaces, dedicated learning spaces in her classroom with more space has absolutely changed what she's capable of doing as a teacher. Her skills haven't changed, the, the ability of her students, her passion for students hasn't changed. Nothing, nothing's changed except for the space she's provided and she will be the first one to tell you, because she's told me many times, that that space alone, it's not a twenty-first century space, it's just literally a bigger space, has made a gigantic difference in how she's able to function in the classroom.
I, what was interesting to me when Jeremiah brought up that because right now we don't have the ability to cycle the fresh air through the building, that that could mean a realized increase once those systems are working the way that they're supposed to in utilities. And I, I don't, don't quote me on this, but if I remember right, like the cost per square foot for utilities at South was like a dollar thirteen or a dollar three, or I asked you this question at one point. And at North, which is twice the amount of square footage, it was like eighty-nine cents or ninety-three cents per square foot. So South is higher in, in costs and that's without having those systems constantly running and cycling electricity to get that fresh air in because that's not an option for us right now. So that's interesting to me and that comes back to like, so where do you stop the repairs? You fix the HVAC, but you don't improve the, um, efficiency of the building by means of addressing things like the doorways, the windows, the other things that you would address if you were doing a remodel. Well, if you've got a leaky house, your furnace is going to run twice as much. School systems are going to operate the same exact way. So there's that balance there of investing, but if you're only making part of it energy efficient, those deficiencies that you have that weren't addressed, it's not going to be the most necessarily cost-effective.
Yeah, because if you're going to spend the thirteen million to get, yeah, just, it's, it feels like, you know, good is good enough, a Band-Aid approach. You have the same tile for gym, all this others, then the spaces and like I said, the discrepancy of the students. We've talked counselors, we've talked about so many things. And then the cost savings of six hundred thousand, just using that, that's an extra ten million of loan payments, so, over the course of twenty years. So you're at twenty-three million at par to build it, right? So you've got a, financially, you've got a heck of a base to, to do something, if we could convince people that's the right direction they want to go.
Yeah, I think, I get what you're saying, Gary, too. I mean, I, we had a point too, like I said, we've, we've tried, we've tried the three site, we tried the fix. We've tried the one site, we tried
Yeah.
three sites again. Where are we at now? Maybe we are back to, maybe we're, are back to Barrett. Maybe that's the most efficient thing that we do. I, I don't know. Like Gary said, we know that's where, you know, the efficiencies will lie, but or do we do the twenty-five million or whatever mine is saying at all, if, you know, all three sites? I just.
I think it's pretty clear, based on everything that we've been through, the, uh, the recommend, or the suggestions we've got from Kensington, the letters that we've received, I mean, it was, it wasn't about the money, it was strictly about the location. They were, they're offered.
It wasn't about the kids, it was about the location.
It was about the location. And so if that's, if that's what people want, I, I, I would struggle spending thirteen million just to get a new, new furnace in the house, so to speak.
Yeah.
But, but, because we're at nineteen million, who's going to get us a brand new school, right?
Yeah.
So this comes down to location. Bottom line, in my opinion.
What do you mean, it comes down to location?
He's saying present a new school in Kensington and, and, and.
I mean, it made, to me, it made sense to, to have it happen because of the, I mean, the, all the efficiencies that we created, busing. The kids were, and the numbers, the numbers don't lie, the numbers, numbers are there. The, I mean, the, you're taking all the kids to bussing to Kensington, but if that's what people want to do at the, at, at the south end of the district, then that's what we do, you know?
I don't think we have the data to support that if it was in Kensington, that it would have passed though. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I don't have an overwhelming, I've talked to as many people that want it in Kensington that were in support of it being at Hoffman if that's what was best for kids. I can count five people from Kensington on, on my hands right now that would not openly say this because. I can count five people from Kensington on on my hands right now that would not openly say this, because it's not a friendly environment to make this comment on public. But they supported having it at Hoffman and voted yes. So it's, I'm, I struggle with just, and I get it, there are some people that are super passionate about keeping that building there. I don't know that I have enough insight based on the conversations. I've had to say, location was the only factor. It, because it still comes back to, you you look at where our population base is, Elbow Lake is more than our little towns combined. And Elbow Lake wasn't on board.
Yeah, see, and that's where I struggle is I'm like, well, if Elbow Lake didn't support it, we should have had more from Elbow Lake if the support was for three sites. That's in my, in my, the way I view it. But I don't think we have enough information that tells us that, that they, you know, I don't, I don't think we have enough information that tells us one or the other.
There's a lot of people from Elbow Lake that didn't support it because of the location that was down there, because they, it's a cohesive group that the folks in Kensington supported, the folks in Elbow Lake to save their school, and the folks in Elbow Lake support folks down there to save theirs. So there's, there's that, there's that.
There's that population, but I don't, I don't think we have any information that says that's the majority, is what my point is.
No, we don't.
I don't think we have any information that says we have support for one, one building or three, to be completely honest. Like, I don't think we have that information. So it comes down to what, you know, what we do, how we do our job.
Do we throw out another option that we think the community wants, or do we continue to find, because we think as a board is the right choice for the kids? You know, that's, that's where it gets difficult.
My idea with 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 Elbow Lake and not being supportive of the two elementary sites, some people aren't gonna vote unless they see a sense of urgency. And, you know, we really didn't communicate the sense of urgency. We we have a pretty good idea what has to be done. I mean, when we look at upgrading now, we're looking at thirteen millions and and two billions, a hundred thousand square feet to address HVAC. And we have data that's been provided that shows that the the environment in there isn't conducive to learning during the good portions of the day because of lighting and particles in the air and CO2. I mean, that's pretty good data. I mean, our students are in the best environment. So so I I I think to go forward, there really has to be a really concentrated effort to say, there, work needs to be done now. And 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 if you wanna look at, and we discussed it, for the best long-term investment is is either one site in in Barrett or two sites. But it's renovation and new at North and it's new at a South location. Because that that gives the taxpayer the best investment for the dollar, the best long-term investment, because now those facilities are are revenue, you're not looking at upkeep for them for decades. They're sad.
Thing I think that's important is sometimes when we talk about our conversations that we have out in the public, we talk about it like people's viewpoints are static. It doesn't change, right? But there are several people that have evolved as they've followed the work the school board's doing. They've supported some things, they haven't supported other things. There is a gentleman from the Hoffman area that just made a comment that he never thought he would ever support a single-site option. And now he supports it. But right behind that person, who now has kids that are older, and so your perspective changes a little bit when all of your kids move to the big school. Right behind him is that mom that's got a four-year-old that next year really wants their kid close to them. So it's, I mean, it, public opinion will change on a regular, ongoing basis. And it's important that we take that feedback, but that shouldn't be the only determining factor that we use to figure out what direction we go. And that's, that's why there is a board. And I'm not saying you don't listen to your public, but that's a piece of the puzzle, right? And beyond that piece of the puzzle, to your point, Gary, you gotta figure out what are our kids not only gonna need next year and tomorrow and the year after. We have to try and anticipate what our kids need over the next twenty-five years. And it's locking us into a solution that doesn't do anything to enhance the education of our kids. That, to me, like thirteen million dollars, I see the value in all of that work, but that's part of the work that has to be done. It doesn't, it doesn't get our kids anything other than, hey, you'll be less sleepy in the classroom in the afternoon. That's a big deal, but not the only, not the only piece of the puzzle when we talk about the collaborative learning spaces and the steam spaces that we've talked about and those other things that we know that we need. You know, awesome that our high school robotics team went and did such a great job. That's another one of those programs that the younger that we can feed that program, the more success that we'll see in high school. We don't have adequate steam space in our elementary schools right now. And we're not gonna get that with just a thirteen-million-dollar HVAC project.
And last sizes from twenty-five to ten, you know, and I think this piece is, this is overarching. This has been weighing on me since the hand sent it out, right? You know, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, this is, it's a final copy. I think that's a trap. But, you know, this this budget issue of what our spend is not going down right now. So we gotta, we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions if this, you know, comes to fruition and we continue to see. Look at us, inflation, we have escalating costs and we've got two percent, you know, inflationary factor that that's not keeping up at all, right? So so we, we're gonna have to become a much more efficient machine going forward to serve our students and our staff and communities and taxpayers efficiently, right?
So one thing I will share with the board, because I certainly don't think that tonight we'll come out of this meeting and say, here's the direction that we're going. I think this is one of many conversations, but I know from previous discussions, there was a question about, does the board work towards making a decision so that we can for sure get something on the November ballot? Do we include, um, if, uh, at that time, we were talking about future superintendent, which we now know is Paul, do we allow him to bring himself up to speed and be a part of that decision? And in, uh, when I was negotiating Paul's contract, he asked where we were at with the bond. And I had shared with him, we're kind of nowhere. We're still evaluating, you know, coming out of the last bond election. Jeremiah at that time had just put his sensors in. We didn't have that data back. We didn't have clear direction on where we're going. We still don't today. But I I indicated to Paul that we had had that discussion. As a board, we were trying to decide, do we keep moving forward? And when you start, say, hey, Paul, here's where we're at, jump in with both feet, help us. Or do we allow you to be a part of helping to determine the direction that we go as you're able to get involved? And I'm not, please don't misinterpret what I'm saying, as saying I'm asking the board to put, you know, this on hold for three years to let Paul get his foot. I think Paul will jump into doing things quickly. He will do whatever the board wants to. But if he has the ability to be a part in getting to the final solution, that would be his preference. With that being said, the board needs to decide, do you want to proceed with making a plan now? And then as Paul gets on board, saying, here's our plan, we need you to jump in and help support this, and here's how we need you to support it. Or does the board want to work towards making a bond plan once Paul starts and he can participate in those conversations?
I would say we keep moving. I mean, I don't think, you know, we, I think it's up to us to continue to keep moving. I wouldn't want to wait, put anything on that type of pause, but I don't know how long it can take us to get there, because we maybe need pause to update and to, you know, work through scenarios again, look at our cash utilization and budget. What's best for the kids and what they're gonna need for the next twenty years again. Kind of start, start, continue to dig in and see if we can make progress, would be my opinion.
Okay. And Sarah, you're shaking your head yes?
Sure.
You're moving forward?
Yes.
Do you have a different?
No, no, I agree. No, I agree.
And Maya, Darren, Terry?
I'm, I'm fine moving forward. I do think that the the next superintendent will have to be involved and.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's just, I've said that before, right? Whoever, and I said it to me, whoever he or she was going to be, uh, our superintendent, they need to be involved. He said, now we know what's around them. So whatever, whatever, we might be watching, playing, or he fell asleep two hours ago. Three hours ago.
Yeah, but I mean, he, he has to be involved. And whatever, and whatever we, however we move forward. Like I said, too, maybe he has ideas that we've overlooked or some, something to play with it. I don't know.
So are you saying involved in coming to our final decision?
I'm, I'm not sure what I'm saying. I'm just saying that he needs to be.
What's in your cup now?
Just water.
Darren, do you have?
I thought, you know, our last plan was good. On the north end was great. I think the south end, I think the plan was good. I just don't, I don't, it's the location that's the big question to me. And I, and like, I don't have any data to support that whether it would have passed in Kensington. I think it would have. But I don't, like Sarah said, I I can't give her data and say it would have, so I don't, you know, I don't know where to go with it from there. But, you know, the thirteen million is, that, that's part of a, it's part of no matter what plan it was to be, that thirteen million was part of the twenty-five, or part of the thirty, or part of whatever. It's just what direction you're going, you know? Those dollars are part of the overall, what we'd have to do anyway, right? I mean, because we wanna put new, if we spent the thirteen million, we're still gonna wanna spend another ten to put new windows in, a new flooring, and new cabinets, and new desks, and all the new stuff so that they can, you know, do, so our staff can do their job and feel comfortable and everything, so.
So how, I mean, we've talked about.
In that thirteen million, you're gonna have to, I mean, you're gonna have to ask for that money.
Yeah.
So you're gonna ask twice.
Well, um, before I say what I was gonna say, Maya, what's your, your thoughts?
Well, I just think we all know there's a timeline, regardless of when we decide to go out for it. There's a reverse timeline that we have to work out. So if it's this year, if there's something gonna go on in November, we know that by August, we gotta have a for-sure thing. And if he comes in in July, I I mean, I don't think we can wait till July to start thinking about it. I think we gotta keep going and figure out what's gonna be best and, you know. Obviously, numbers are crazy right now, but we still gotta figure something out. Regardless of what we wanna think about the economy right now, we still gotta have a school and, you know, and we're at the point where we let things go in hopes that something passes and and pretty soon you're, you know, it's not gonna be good.
So what is the process that the board wants to follow in order to get to the point of having consensus? Because to be honest, I think we're all on slightly different pages, which is fine. We've all interpreted the the last election and had conversations and, um, but in revisiting options and revisiting that discussion, how do we productively, what's the process we're going to go through to get to a consensus? If we're gonna take on making this decision before the superintendent that's gonna help lead the process is on board with us? Are we scheduling a special meeting and we're just gonna sit and have two hours of conversation? Are we, um, going to ask for specific data that we'd like to review and we wanna add it to a future meeting agenda? Those are just a couple of examples, but if our, if the board wants to move forward, great. Now, what's that process look like, is my question?
I think you gotta decide what to do with that thirteen million, you know, that thirteen million, he said, to fix these things up, to do just the HVAC. We gotta decide if we wanna go that road or we wanna go back to a a bigger plan.
I don't think anyone here is okay with doing just a thirteen right now, are we? But I mean, based on just the short conversation we had, I don't think anyone here is there.
Or or if he comes back, I asked specifically, you know, maybe he comes back and says we can do one of the boilers and we do one of them for three million and go all-electric, because that's the new rage, right? Or I, you know, I don't know. And maybe there's some things.
Maybe we can maybe shave a couple million off that, but I mean.
I don't know.
But what he was saying was.
Maybe there's another short-term fix out there in within which gives us back, because it's pretty broad, I thought, today. But either way, I think we should think, we should get it together for, I think, like you said, a special meeting would make sense. You know, maybe we get another bid on, um, a one-site and a three-site, because we've never had a twenty-five-million-dollar option, right? There were thirty-five and thirty-eight.
Twenty-five option, not to spit on the ballot, but we had one that if it was just straight full renovation of the
I would just rent.
Of existing spaces that we have now, it was under that.
Yeah, so maybe revisit that, too. What's that cost today? So pull all of those three or four options together.
But those costs were, you're talking about that?
Well, the full, you know, just the full renovation of whatever we have for square footage, footage existing was, I think, was under twenty-five, under twenty-five million at one point.
Yeah, we'll say.
It was at like, it was like twenty-one million or something like that, right? I mean, the existing square footage I'm talking of right now, that we currently have.
And that was new rooms and stuff, right?
Well, you could adjust, that'd be a full renovation, a total job, you know, maybe adjusting some room sizes. But the overall, the overall envelope of the building stayed the same in both locations.
Yeah.
And I don't know, one of the things that stuck out to me too about the conversation is the the bones comment that was made is that, you know, it's not that we have great bones in our building. So when we're talking about rentals, I.
Yeah.
Meaning it's a very invasive project. Huh?
What was that?
Well, that, he was kinda excited when he first came to the building and he walked around, looking at it. Jeremiah was.
Well, he said it's taken care of, but when it, when you talk about making new spaces is what he said, you know, making better spaces like we're talking about that we don't, it's not, it's not that easy to do with what we have. Is that, that was just something that stuck out to me. When we're talking about not just wanting to, you know, get the HVAC and make it more comfortable. I mean, I don't know.
When when Maya had mentioned the the thirty million and and what survey showed our community members would support, that goes back to school receptions, that the volume was actually higher than that. And and now we're looking at figures that are, I mean, the survey was taken essentially over two years ago. There's been inflation since then. And to to get to that level and things have changed. I mean, we've stated, do you, if you wait, things will cost more, there's no doubt about that. You know, so when you, when you go forward and I'll start talking about renovation, you went through a process of making determination of of what project to choose based upon the long-term fiscal responsibility for the district. And now you're talking about going back to renovate perhaps facilities and not add more space. So you're not, you're not enhancing that opportunity for students and staff. What I see is you're settling, I think what you're gonna find, and I'll be long gone, I'll be buried by the twenty-third.
Man, what?
But but when you're looking, when you're looking fifteen years down the road, it's like, God. Back in twenty-twenty-two, we should have made a decision.
Yeah, why did we do this?
Because now, here we are, we're fifteen years later, and now we're gonna have to go to the borders to get additional money to take care of this.
You could do this then, right?
If you could, you know, so, so really, if if you, if you go back to what information you had reviewed and doing the project that was on the ballot last time, that puts you in a position in which the district doesn't have to address facilities for, like I said earlier, tonight, decades. You know, not just fifteen years, you're looking at probably forty years old, unless you should have an explosion of population. And then both the new site and the renovated site at at, um, at Elbow Lake have space for expansion. And if you have to shift, um, I don't know. I I I think you, don't lose focus on on what you wanted to do. When when Maya mentioned the timeline, I mentioned August, um, a lot of critical comments about the community or the claims that the community wasn't informed, that the board hadn't shared this, the superintendent hadn't shared this. I think you're gonna make, I mean, if you're gonna go in November, you need to make the decision well before Mr. Brown, whoever, steps forward on the side. Because you need to get ahead of it, you need to get the publicity out there, you need to get the information out that you want people to share. So really, you have to decide, if you want a November election, you need to decide what you want to do. And and if you wanna wait and and have a another superintendent go through and help evaluate things and lead you through, you're gonna come up with the same data. I mean, you know, when I stepped in here, we reviewed stuff that had been done previously and what had been recommended by prior superintendents. One site and my first recommendation and and giving the indication, what's the best, most fiscally responsible from an operations standpoint, it's one site. And through some discussion and and review, um, you know, came to the point that, well, two sites for elementary probably serves the district well. So, um, that's a concession from from me, from a philosophical one, because I want that academic benefit of having all the students and all the staff members in one location and and the financial efficiency. But through discussion with a lot of people, I recognize that it might not be the last best long-term plan. It might not be successful because of the fringe. So you need to do some soul searching and Michelle's idea and Gary concur that you need to have a meeting, but you need to have some thought and come back and hit this again.
Yeah.
And 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 that meeting should go, that meeting should go soon, because otherwise there's people sitting around this table that aren't gonna be available or easily available for another meeting.
Yeah.
So are we at potentially, I mean, for example, if we look at next Wednesday?
I am hopefully out until deadline, so.
I am heavily out until deadline, so sorry.
Which is the following week, right?
I say eighteenth, I'm out till deadline, I can't do it anymore, we're still deadline. No, I'm just saying. This is way more timely tonight than we were thinking at all, so.
My speech is gonna start slurring and I'm gonna be able to clearly communicate after nine P M.
I'm free anytime after the eighteen.
Okay, but what about what about this then here, next meeting was on the twentieth and since we've done a lot of preliminary work, we've got a few other things left here, but we didn't preliminary work. That meeting can potentially be short, the only hang up there is, do you have a commitment next Wednesday or the Wednesday and the twenty?
They're not one that's not flexible.
You know, so you could go through your regular business meeting and then you could have another work meeting to follow, so you're not taking another night, but you're two weeks out rather than waiting another month.
Do you think we could get updated bids on complete rentals, one site, how we have two new sites again?
I think.
Well, the two numbers that are going on are are the renovation per square foot and the new construction per square foot. Everything else is pretty much staying the same, the other sixteen and a half percent.
So so really, what they'd be doing is rather than saying two hundred and sixty-five dollars per square foot, if they're thinking it's up, it's two seventy-five, two eighty-five or whatever their cost projection is.
Two sixty-five, that included the, when it went to two sixty, is it two sixty-five what it was last time?
Two sixty-five was the.
Yeah, and that and that included the third, that was, that was, that included the COVID inflation at that time. Because that included all thirty percent from the time before.
Well, now we're, we've got.
I don't know what it's gonna be, I'm not. Between that one and the last one we added is about thirty percent.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna recommend that we wait food for the special meeting that night.
Yeah.
For anybody here from sixty-eight talking about facilities, so much, it'd be really good. So.
Um, so, yeah, so we're gonna add that on to that meeting, so.
Yep, um, I'm gonna.
Twenty? Yep, yep, yep.
I'm gonna ask for a motion to hold a special meeting after the regularly scheduled business meeting on April twentieth.
So.
Second.
Yes, motion and a second, roll call starting with Krishnathan.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Estenzi, yes, Sabalik.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
And Alrick.
Yes.
Okay. All right, check number two out six off. Uh, number three, review of current M S H S L opportunities and consider, I told you, consideration and expanding. Do you wanna start, um, the discussion here with kind of the background information you had?
Sure, sure, the the best I have, and and we we know the sports coops that we have, there were kind of equal participants, our wrestling program and our football program. You know, we have, you know, athletes coming here. When we look at tennis, we're pretty much an equal partner with with Morris and that as well. The the one that was was out of balance was hockey. We sent, I, you know, an athlete, I think at one point it might have been two that participated, um, to Morris. You've never been involved in a gymnastics. So so when you look at, um, um, expanding that, it makes another commitment for travel or a place responsible for travel on the families. You have established a contract with them, they'll be a small fee, you know, depending upon who would take you. I really don't think that Alexandria is a community that's gonna look to establish a co-op. I think they have plenty of athletes in every sport that they have, and I think that Ferguson's in the same situation. So Boris is the option for gymnastics and for hockey, that's the direction that you wanna go. When you look at the the percentage of of students that participate, um, between fall, winter and spring. In winter sports, we have some are are the lowest participation, so if we're, and this probably would happen if you're pulling athletes from a winter sport co-op here, it diminishes those numbers again. But as we look at lower youth group numbers, that might not be an issue for me, so I'd have more than nothing. You know, from from a standpoint, from from discussion of Jake and I, what. It probably isn't a path that is real attractive to go down. But again, you make the decision on what kind of opportunities you want to provide for athletes. And if you're gonna do hockey, we've had inquiries about gymnastics right after that.
We have had inquiries about it.
I was gonna say, that, how many, how many inquiries have we had? Handful?
Well, you usually, you usually, you usually get one person that says they're interested, that's a contact, but then they'll identify other people that are not by name, but there are other people that are interested as well. You know, so.
Okay, so like the hockey situation, is that something, like, did the parent come and say, I have a kid that wants to play hockey, so can we look at a co-op? And that's why we started doing it first?
And an email to Mr. Fosley.
Why, if we did it before, why wouldn't we do it? What would the the reasoning be?
Well, we don't have any athletes doing it right now, is what he said, so we wouldn't have written a contract because we had no athletes participating in it.
No, but.
But but why wouldn't wanna do it?
Yeah.
You missed, if Jake would would have not discussed that, because I wasn't involved in the hockey program at all.
Maybe you could be a little involved in that. Well, the conversation we had about hockey years ago was because there was a one student interested and our opinion was even if it benefits one student, let's do it. That was our conversation, that's how that, that's how that happened. And yeah, that's graduated, so we hadn't had any additional interest until now. So now we're right back to what Michelle said, we did it before, we do it again, whatever we do to benefit those students.
So that question is, if we're talking about one hockey student, I'm assuming that situation, the parents probably provided the tent transportation. We probably do not provide for my transportation for one student to go.
Correct, correct, they did.
So if you're talking about adding a possibility of, I don't know, twenty to thirty gymnastics kids, if, I mean, if we were to look into that, that's.
Does it involve tennis? Does anybody know?
They have.
Don't we send a man down?
They have transportation penalty, those numbers are smaller likely than they would be, is what I'm saying, is when we have one hockey player and, you know, I think it's a man that goes for.
I think there were six tennis players in the super group. Yeah, man, so.
And they they go in the middle.
Yeah.
Middle of us.
So I'm just saying, obviously, a hockey situation, depending on how many parents there were or how many kids there were, I mean, that's obviously gonna be consideration because that's gonna be additional cost to us on top of the participation fee. And then, like I said, when you look at gymnastics, I mean, we don't know, you know, what kind of turnout you're gonna have until you offer it, that's the other thing. So, you know, if you, if we end up going down that road and, I mean, that's just something that needs to be considered and what are the costs related to it? Because when we're busing them all the way, you know, they're gonna be, if we're, if we are gonna provide the transportation, it's one conversation, if we aren't, it's another.
Well, like for tennis, for instance, what we co-op with Morris. I would guess that our intention is, is to grow that sport, to have our own team. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, our ultimate goal, I wouldn't think would, at least it's not my ultimate goal, to continue to co-op.
Correct, right.
With Morris forever in tennis. I'm hoping that we grow the sport and we fix the tennis court and we have it right here. And hockey, that's a long stretch, right?
Yeah, same.
But it, but it's still, it's it's, but we should still do it, but.
You know, the tennis, whereas honestly, co-op numbers haven't changed.
Yeah, tennis hasn't changed.
And we don't have a, we don't have a younger feeder program, like, you know, Bruce Struck used to do tennis lessons at the tennis court in Kensington. And all the way up through when you got to the junior high level, when you were playing junior high tennis, and we don't, we don't have that elementary presence anymore. Which we know from wrestling and basketball and football that that plays a big part in what our numbers look like. The.
The hockey thing, I think we got, I mean, we did it in the past, we need to, we need to continue doing that.
Right, and I think as long as, like I said, it's the same thing, but I mean, when you talk about whether or not we're providing transportation or not, if it's one or two students, I don't know that we're, you know, we have to go down and decide what we're gonna do there.
We have to find where that balance is and then I suppose we have to kind of make a decision on if it gets to here, we do this, and if it gets to here, we do that, unless there's some other rules or regulations that.
So from the, you know, similar to Becky being here tonight and speaking to the board, you know, Tina did the same thing when we previously looked at the the hockey program. That speaks volumes, to help us as a board understand what level of commitment, um, they're asking for us. Um, I'm not sure that I'm ready to consider or not consider the gymnastics thing until, you know, it would be nice to have at least a parent here that could maybe give us some insight as to what they think that would look like.
I'd also like to hear from Jake since since Dale's not wanting to speak on why, why, why the, well, why the recommendation would be to not, I would like to hear more from Jake on that. Before we even consider anything else, because there's obviously something we're not understanding.
I did.
We'll put these things on the agenda for, um, the next board meeting then.
Okay.
And they'll be, they'll be stated in a, in a, in a way in which we would explore the opportunities for hockey and gymnastics in the, in the future. And and explore the interest of Morrison, accepting this new co-op.
I I would, um, from my perspective, and I'm not sure how other board members feel, but I would actually prefer, when it comes to the hockey thing, to have follow up maybe sooner than that. An email from Jake with a, um, maybe some background about what a hockey co-op order would mean. That to me isn't, isn't easier discussion because we've done it before, but if there's something I'm missing, I think that's something that's fairly easy for.
That's something we need to, like, that's not a timely thing right now, is it?
To, well.
For hockey.
I would be, I would be much more prepared as a school board member to take action on a hockey co-op at our next board meeting than I would on the gymnastics thing.
We don't have any athletes in it right now.
But we're going to.
Next year we are, you're saying?
Dude, that's, I mean, that's.
It wouldn't be for, like, three, three years, I think, is we just, yeah, unless it's JV, and that's something that Jake would have to clarify. So we don't have any athletes, we're gonna be.
Because if it does affect JV, it would be sooner.
Yeah, so I would for Jake directly, because I was hoping he could just say, like, yeah, absolutely, we'd be willing to do that, you know, bring it up when the time comes. But he kind of gave me the roundabout and didn't give me any answers, and so then I'm like, well, I better go to the board.
Oh, they get super, they get super nervous to talk on behalf of the board because the board has to take action on it.
Well, not on behalf, because I just, but regardless, as I said, because we just, we wanna move him to, if if it's going to be a possibility, we move him to Morris sooner than later. Because it's just gonna make the transition easier, but if it's not and going to, like, if the board's flat out would never consider it, then we would probably look at other options. So I'm just saying, I don't think it's a timely situation right now, I think, because we don't need to make this decision right now because we don't have an athlete next season probably going into it.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, I think we could talk about it all together, is all I'm saying.
I thought this was something we need to take action because we needed to do it next year.
No. Oh, we know how long these wait to go, because anyways, once they come.
All right, so, clear as mud? Okay. All right, number four, budget year to date, uh, revenue and expenses, sounds like you have some fantastic news for us, do I?
This is very clear for this year. What I've come up with so far will be deficit spending by about three hundred ninety-two thousand in the general fund. Compared to what was projected in June of about two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Now, part of that, or a good chunk of that is a hundred and forty thousand dollars less in revenue for special ed. We had budgeted nine hundred and forty thousand, the latest numbers that have come out from M D E and Todd Travis at the special ed club. Looks more like eight hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue is what we'll get. A lot of that has to do with tuition bills for kids going to other districts, and we still have to pay for them, and we don't know that until it gets to this time of year or later. So we knocked that down by a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then we're getting ninety thousand dollars less in compensatory funding. Because free, numbers are down, free and reduced, or the forms are being sold out and things like that.
How do we, how do we, how do we fix that? Because that, that free and reduced lunch spending or list obviously affects our funding.
Yeah.
So are we educating our, are we educating our our district good enough so that they know that? Because, so it sounds like, yeah, these funds that are coming in from the state that are paying for lunch are a good thing, but they're gonna hurt us in the long run, is the way, the way I'm kind of, the way I'm kind of thinking.
Yes.
Sorry, we're not, we're not doing it well enough, but we pride, we.
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to put any, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring up this.
This would be a lot of. This is not.
Because it 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 affects us in, isn't, isn't that free and reduced lunch part, doesn't that affect us in, even in athletics as well?
Probably.
Yes.
I mean, in what class you're gonna be in, based on that, those numbers are indicated in that formula as well.
So. Right. Going back in history, this is not an issue that's isolated to even just after COVID. I mean, before COVID, there's, there, for the years I've been on the board, we have tried, um, auto voice notes that have gone out to parents. We have tried talking about it at parent teacher conferences, we have sent letters home, we have tried having staff members available to fill out the forms with them that are in the secretarial office, like, there is, I mean.
We had an auto form at conferences, it's usually ninety-five percent of our families show up, we still get them back.
Right. There, it's, um, I mean, even when you talk about compensatory spending, like, it's not, unfortunately, like, the parent, that money's not going in the parent's pocket. So it's really hard to communicate how important that is to us as a school, this word.
It's gonna come out of the pocket if we don't get this figured out.
Doesn't think it changes with the automatic door, if you're eligible for.
Maybe. We're, we're trying, maybe try harder, make it more available, not try harder, maybe the.
What's the incentive for you to do it?
Yeah, well, well, us raising the levy, I guess, is an incentive.
Why would you do it? Yeah.
It's incentive for me. And then is this three hundred ninety-two thousand dollar deficit, is that including the, the money that we're using from Esther funds to backfill some of those, these expenses? So without those expenses, it would be five hundred thousand?
That's why we're budgeting five hundred plus, yeah, assuming, right?
Yeah, I haven't gotten to the next year yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, hope not. But the Esther funds are usually expenses out cash flow, so they net to zero.
But how much, how much of, uh, from, from the number, how do I make this question? From the number of, prior to COVID, there was a, an average number of free and reduced lunch that filled out, right? And then versus the number that we have now, how much, by, if, if all remains the same and it's the same number that qualified prior to COVID versus what, what qualifies today? How much money there are we giving away or that we're not getting that we should be getting?
Well, at least ninety thousand or a hundred thousand.
Ninety thousand dollars, that's a ton of money.
And that's just in compensatory, our title funding, title one funding goes down.
It's all tied to that.
So that's, that's two, so a total.
You know, your title one funding is all tied to your free and reduced lunch number, so like.
Can we advertise that?
They got like.
Exactly, that's what I'm getting, that's where I'm getting, I'm not saying we're not doing our job, we're trying to, trying to do it, but as a whole.
Want to see.
What it would be there, guess what? Please do this, because you could get us this money. Right.
I mean, I'm not out telling, you know, I haven't physically been out telling people, hey, check and see if, you know, must work because, but this is a huge, this is a huge number.
So there was a. There was a change that was approved for Medicaid direct certification, so starting in the fall of twenty twenty-two, any family or student that qualifies for Medicaid will have direct, um, certification approved for free and reduced lunch, so hopefully that helps a little bit.
Grab on a little bit.
And that did pass, we got that from M R A, but that was.
It doesn't help as much with the reduced families, but yeah.
We really need to get that word out at the district. And not that we haven't, I'm not, I'm not trying to downplay the work that we've done. I'm just saying that it's, it's, it's more important than ever right now, really, because, because people don't see it, because it's rare right now, you know, why build it up?
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna stop our conversation for just a second because we have two different conversations going. And I know it's getting late in the night, that's okay. So.
Yeah.
Um, Gary had asked a question, if that's okay, Gary, if you wanna repeat that question, so everyone.
Yeah. Well, we had, Dale had mentioned earlier, you know, some of the fees that'll get charged, they're gonna motivate people, you know, to to probably sign up, right? You know, we talked about that earlier, that might be one trigger point, and then Susan's point was, well, stated too, so maybe some of it will start to hopefully take care of itself again.
Yeah. Activity fees.
Can we start, can we put together some type of a, of a list of those things that are affected and and put that out? Like, you know, there are dollars for this, all been equal, we lost ninety dollars for this, for title one or whatever, we lost, we've lost this amount of money.
Yeah, are you aware of it? Yeah.
With fees and stuff, we have approximately X amount of students that are missing out on, on a, you know.
And we could put that in the paper for them all.
Particular fees or, and just, just to get out there that, you know.
You blast them on Facebook and.
It's a really, it's a huge.
Third, once or twice and follow it, see what happens.
To, to do that, that's similar, we've already done, we can certainly do that again, but probably the place to get is that activity fee schedule, because if, if, if you have a three sport athlete, plays football, that's a hundred and ten dollars in the fall. Ninety-five dollars in the winter, and the spring sport is gonna be ninety-five as well, so it's three hundred dollars.
So, um, one thing that crossed my mind was with early entrance conferences, the teachers, they have the paperwork, they give it to the parents, but they wanna spend their time talking about the kid. The one thing we haven't tried that came to my mind was what if you had an enrollment specialist that after the parents did their, um, meeting with the teacher, they could go, they get, whether it's a secretary or. whether it's a secretary or it's a parent or whatever, that then says, okay, I'm gonna walk through all the paperwork the teacher just gave to you. Do you want help filling that out so that I can give it back to the teacher tonight and you don't have to worry about sending it back? Or is this something you wanted to take off? We can't force people to do it, but.
So we've done that, and nobody stops.
Sure. It didn't work.
I was just gonna say, I think most people are not gonna wanna do it.
The only thing they've done is they've changed the contact information of like people who shift to up their children
Yeah.
or if they check their cell phone number or they check their email address to see if that's correct, that's it. And we handed out a form to everybody who came through there.
Yeah.
And ninety-eight percent of the people don't wanna fill it out because first of all, lunches are free, so it wasn't a big deal. And a lot of times, parents don't think they'll qualify. And I always said, fill it out anyway because we, you know, it gives us, it gives the school money whether you qualify or not. But again, with all of lunches being free, there was no motivation to do it. And we actually had somebody sitting, we had a pair of sitting at a table with a filled-out form so that everybody could see it when they came by, and we still only got like seven.
Is this something that if this is gonna continue, if this, if this free lunch program is gonna continue, is this something that we should be talking to our legislators about so that they can maybe use prior numbers back before they started giving the free, the free lunches? So that.
They did that last year.
That we're at least getting.
They did.
That was the year before.
They did that already.
They did, but the problem is that we know that with inflation and COVID, we had more people that probably should have qualified.
Okay, so that's.
Still on the MRA platform, so MRA is still addressing it, it's on their platform. And we're working for a way for districts to be able to identify the students don't qualify for SNAP or Medicaid, but still qualify for free and reduced meals. So they're still working on it. Doesn't mean it's for sure gonna get, it's also about, they feel like they made one step.
Yes, it's not just us, every district is a sample.
It's just the big volume money.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, for sure.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars or more. Just that, our budget deficit is because we're not filling out paperwork.
Diane, we were talking about the budget.
That was such a report. The food service fund is about the same as it was last summer. Revenue's gone up because the free and reduced meals are what the feds pay us, but food costs have risen dramatically this year. Community ed, that's showing a bit more of a deficit. That could possibly be handled by, with they reallocate the BPK, the voluntary pre-K money. We could get some, we won't know for another month or two. And that usually goes to offset the, the preschool costs, which are in community ed. So that would help, yeah. Plus, it was budgeted for a higher amount of community ed revenue for last summer. And it didn't happen, we came in about ten thousand dollars short of what we had budgeted for, for last summer. And so between those, that could possibly take care of the community ed deficit. Or as we've done in the past, we could transfer funds from the general fund to the community ed fund to take care of that deficit. So right now, overall, all funds, about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit. But most of that is general funded, community ed fund.
So is it more on the income side or expense versus our budget? Or is it both?
Both.
How both?
Yeah.
Is it happening yet?
Lost some revenue, yeah, we have, we get the.
And have higher expenses.
What's our, I can't think of what the term is, what is our enrollment number right now? Or like.
About seven sixty?
Okay. That's our ADEU?
ADEU.
ADEU, I'm sorry.
I've, I've got ADE, I was trying to edit out, I'm, I'm done.
Between the two of us, I'm all mixed.
I'm gonna need an AED, which is not gonna get out of here.
Good, he wants it.
I think it's about seventy-one, eighty-year over here, or it's down a little bit.
Dollars.
Yeah. I thought we were eighty, over eighty.
I thought we were over eight hundred, not that long ago.
Not that long.
Oh, not ADEU, is it?
Oh, just got it, for ADE, yeah, timing.
Time it off. We're just making up stuff.
That's fine.
No more, no more.
These act.
Oh, these acronyms. Any other questions for Diane?
No, but we, we have some more things.
We do.
Do we need to schedule finance committee, to help with stuff?
I need to ask a question. Well, I mean, it, it's not.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I need to go home, so we need to.
So to your point, we're not talking about the little shifts that we've seen us have to, over five hundred thousand dollar deficit is, that's twenty percent of our general fund balance, right?
Yeah.
Give or take.
But that's, that's overall for.
Right, but to put it in perspective, that's deficit spending, twenty percent of what's in our general funding balance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I would say yes, we should have a finance committee and talk a little bit about where we might be going in these next couple of years. Um, I also think, just as an additional statement I would make, that that conversation ties into our facilities conversation also. They're, they're interrelated with each other, our financial state is a district and where we need to go. So, I would support that, having a finance committee meeting to maybe discuss a little bit further about where we think we're going and then bring that back to the, the board.
Or at least I just feel a little understanding of what you think is.
I think it's, do, Dale, you'll work with Diane maybe to look at availability, I would assume, and then. Or is it the three of us?
It was me, I don't remember if we moved it or not, I just.
I don't think we moved out the finance committee, you're CPA.
I don't know.
I don't think we let you go anywhere.
Yeah, you're probably.
Okay. Number five, activity fees and admission costs for FY twenty-three.
Okay, this document had been emailed to you with Scott, that's a highlight of all the fees, it's been updated only through nineteen, two thousand, nineteen twenty, hasn't been adjusted beyond then. You know, so Jake and I talked about an increase of ten dollars per athletic event increase in increasing admissions from six dollars for adults to eight in students from four five. Now, we only charge our students, but it's for the students that come from opposing countries.
I think that if that's in alignment of the conference that we're currently in, now that it makes sense to change the admission because that's what we're gonna be paying when they go to their events. And I think that we've already discussed the change in activity fee clearly enough, but I think that I would move to, yeah, it's just.
So I don't think you have enough information, so we'll put that on the agenda for next month or next meeting as well.
Yes. Okay. Number six, substitute teacher pay.
Um, again, this came out of, may I?
Absolutely.
This came out of meet and confer, and then they asked, you know, what can we do to probably attract more substitute teachers? And I know that each day we have physicians that go and fill, we're dividing classes and it's hard to get them. So with this document, it gives you an idea of what some other districts do, what's in your packet. My suggestion is that you look through that and, and we have a, we'll have an agenda item at the next meeting as well to adjust fees and probably some other providers accommodations, not only to attract more people, but also to reward substitute teachers that are, who have been good to us to come in and put in our, some of them you see pretty ugly.
Also going to address what the rate for our teachers that end up subbing was going to be also, correct?
That's in the master register.
Was there an inconsistency there though, between what a sub rate is and what, if I remember right, from meet and confer, what a sub rate is and what a teacher is paid to sub in a classroom? I thought there was a potential inequity there. Or if we increase the sub rate pay, I would say that in the circumstances where a sub's not available and one of our internal teachers becomes a sub, we should make sure that it's equitable. Or had the discussion, I'll put it that way. I thought that came up at some point.
The other part about the discussion is we're not, we, we still need to put a lot of our effort in, into the real. The problem isn't just pay, the problem is availability. We don't have the number of subs to do it, and that's the real elephant in the room, that we have to, we have to address as, as boards, speaking to our legislators and, and our administrators, speaking to our legislators. Because what I found out through sending Natalie's letter to Tori and talking to Tori is that it got passed. And people gotta understand this, that it passed the Senate last year to reduce the qualifications and make more people available to sub with two-year degrees and, and/or not. And the House defeated it. And the, the, the larger teachers' union fought not to, not to allow it to happen. So we need to make sure that we're, we're, we're speaking to our legislators and, and, and keep the pressure on them to make it more available because it's, to me, it's absolutely, and I made this point to Tori and he, he agreed. But it's absolutely ridiculous that somebody that's got my qualifications or my qualifications or, or all these farmers out here that are, may not have a four-year degree, but they got, they're in charge of millions and millions of dollars and they can't sub. It's absolutely ridiculous. And so teacher or substitute pay is one thing, but we can't take our foot off the pedal of putting tremendous amount of pressure on our legislators to get this thing changed and, and make it more available because it's only gonna get worse. And, and I know I'm making a kind of a statement here, but that's okay because it's only gonna get worse because as a society right now, we're pushing for, which is a good push, for community college and two-year degrees and service degrees and things, things like that. So if that's what, as a society, we're pushing towards, this problem is not gonna get any better, it's gonna get worse. So we have to, as a district, continue to send letters to our, to our legislators and to get this thing changed.
Maya, were you looking to add to the conversation there?
I was just gonna say, the army says I can take a hundred and sixty soldiers into war, but I can't watch a room of thirty kids in the classroom, so.
You can handle our thirty kids, only sixteen fifth graders.
Yeah, what's a soldier go to, a grade ratio?
My whole point is we have, we have to make it a point, we have to make it a point to continue to send letters when we go to, you know, administrators go to conferences that they, or legislative, you know, when you go and talk to your legislators, that you really push this point home because, you know, I've worked on it a little bit and come up with, found out a lot of stuff that, and the way I see it going right now, it's only gonna get worse for our staff. They're gonna have less and less people to, as a pool to pick from. And so regardless of what we pay, it's not, it might not get any better.
Any other comments or questions or thoughts?
Come on to a jury.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Second, we'll move into a roll call vote, starting with Kristiansen, Rose, Desmond, Dejasa, Bala, Strom, Tommyas, and Alar.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.